Hi, welcome to the November 19th, 2018 meeting of the North Brookfield School Committee. This meeting is being recorded by the North Brookfield LPAC. If there's anyone present who is also recording this meeting, please raise your hand so others may be aware. All right, moving on to approval of minutes. Anyone have any changes to the minutes? If we don't have any changes, then I just need a motion for my... And if any of you guys want to move down from the...
Is Maggie at the podium?
I don't know. She shows up. We'll make space.
Can I make a motion to accept the minutes for last look?
I second it.
All in favor? I don't have any correspondence. So, moving on to presentations, I guess, first thing? Or unless, do we want to have Christina maybe do her?
Yeah, why don't we have...
Christina, why don't you do yours first? Thank you.
Go home and get her homework.
No, her homework's still done, all right.
Actually, I should come to the meeting and then...
Oh, right, I know, I remember now.
So, good evening. I don't have too long of report for you guys tonight, so it shouldn't be too long. So, first off, on October 31st, we held the Trick or Treat for canned goods. This didn't go as well as we would like it to have gone, but that's on our part. We should have advertised for it more and got the word out more. However, we still did receive a pretty good amount of canned items to donate to the food pantries, so it was still good to be able to help out and give to our community. So, on Friday, November 2nd, we hosted the Halloween Dance for 7th through 12th grades. We had these really good chairs for the dancer, younger council members, and it was good to see them really step out of their comfort zone. I walked into the Halloween Dance and there was decorations everywhere. They had a huge spook walk set up in the gym. It was awesome, it was a good time, and we made a pretty good profit off it, too. So, it was good to have everyone have a good time and still make money out of it. So, last Thursday, on November 15th, we put up our Giving Turkey in our school lobby. So, what this is, is it's a big handmade turkey, and on the feathers, there's items that can be grabbed and then brought in and donated. So, our grades are going to be competing back and forth, and whoever brings in the most items at the end of the month is going to get Spirit Week points or whatever. So, it's just kind of a good way to be able to drive them to bring in items that we can donate.
So, the end of November, I guess, or...
And then, we're gonna, when it gets to December, we're gonna switch it to a Giving Tree and then Present Boxes. So, it'll be like the same thing, just Christmas themed. So, yeah, that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Great. You guys have a Facebook page, right?
Yes.
Why don't you put a picture of your Giving Turkey on there?
Okay, yeah, good idea. Let's talk to the PR about that.
So, we have a special guest here this evening. I saw her come in. This is a blank, if you could come join us over here.
Why?
Why?
Because you're in trouble.
This is what I feel.
Because you're in trouble.
I forgot about the meeting.
Well, you're here now.
I didn't forget. You're here.
Thanks for having me, gentlemen.
I took my phone.
Are you, you want to go first or me?
There we go. Yeah. So, we had to trick you to get you here.
You weren't good at it.
Well, you're here, so...
It worked.
It worked. Whatever it takes. So, no, we just thought it's, I think it's really important to recognize people who are so important to the district, and we thought that because you make sure everybody gets paid, that you are very important. No, I'm kidding. You do so much for so many people in so many different ways for this district, from, obviously, all of the business, support of me and the other administrators. You coach, you are a parent, you are involved in town politics, you do so much that it's just important to recognize people who are part of the solution, and you certainly are. So, we just wanted to take a brief moment to say thank you and to show some appreciation for the amount of work that you do every day, whether there's work or no work. So, thank you.
Well, and in case anyone is unaware, until recently, Sheila was doing probably a job, two and a half jobs herself, and that she did come in on weekends, and I know you didn't take any vacation days this summer, right? Or very few weren't able to, because you had to...
Couple Fridays.
Right, a couple Fridays. So, anyway, we appreciate all your work and that the school couldn't run without you.
That's for sure.
So, Rich has a certificate for you.
So, this certificate entitles you to ice tea.
I think I can get that.
On a daily basis.
Oh, on a daily basis.
Thank you so much.
Stay there. Stay there.
The school committee got you some flowers.
Those are nice.
Thank you.
We got you a little something, you need to open it, okay?
Want me to open the whole top one?
Yeah, hold it up. It's a very expensive gift.
Can I see flamingo something?
I like that.
Do you want to write up a map?
Yes, it is.
So, you can show everyone.
Chris.
Nice. All right, so I do need a picture now, so. Flowers.
You should take your picture.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
I made you smell up the nice flowers. So, what's your problem? Are you staying?
Yes, I can.
No, I don't know.
Oh, you can go.
No, actually, you're gonna stay till the bitter ends.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sheila.
Thank you. If you didn't guess, it's that rich. So, yes, now we move on to...
How do you follow that?
That's a hard, yes, I was gonna say, that's a hard one to follow. So, I'm gonna walk through a short presentation on the accountability rating that we have received from the Department of Ed, and kind of what it implies for both of the schools. So, you should have school community members a PowerPoint in your packet that I will go through. So, the first is just some brief terminology that will help as you, as I go through the presentation.
Sorry, just trying my...
So, the first two terms are probably very familiar to you, achievement, which is the score on a subject area, and student growth percentiles, how much a student has grown compared to their prior assessment. So, those are two terms that still exist within the accountability, but the ones below might look new. So, the next one is indicators. So, besides just the assessment of the MCAST, the state is looking at a number of indicators to give an overall accountability report for a school and a district. Those indicators we'll look at in a moment, but each one has a target. So, the state sets a target that they expect you to reach, and it's based on the last year's data, and in the future, it'll be based on multiple year data, but last year was the first year that we did the new testing. So, each school and district gets a measure of percentage points, so how many points you earn towards the target that the state set for you. And we'll talk, I'm gonna get into more detail of this, but just as an overview. And then, each school, so no district, but each school gets a percentile comparing them to the rest of the schools that took the same test across the state. And then, the new, another new piece from this accountability is that the state is measuring the overall data from students as well as the lowest performing subgroup. So, this used to be, they would measure students with economic disability, and then they measure students with dis, students with disabilities, measure race. Now, they're all putting it together, and they're just measuring the lowest 25% for 20 students, depending on what it is. So, your overall score for the district and the school is based on all the students and this lowest 25%, which I'll talk more about, which only comes up in a couple places for us, because you have to have 20 students in that group, in the lowest performing subgroup, and we didn't always have that. So, just some info to reference as we move through. So, this is for the elementary school, so MDES. As I said, there are specific indicators that are measured, and they all have a certain weighting. So, the first is achievement. So, you can see that achievement is measured for the ELA test, the math test, and the science achievement, and it's two-thirds of all the points, percentage points, basically, is weighted of the achievement. So, you get a score towards that achievement target that they set for us, and then that score is weighted at 67.5%. Student growth, again, is another, looking at ELA and math, so again, that's students compared to students who are similar to them on the last assessment they took. That gives 22.5% of the score. We do not have ELA population, but we do, the other additional indicator that's new is chronic absenteeism. So, it's a percentage of students missing 10% or more of their day in membership goes towards our whole accountability, and that is 10% of that score. So, this is for the elementary school. So, these are the indicators. At the high school, again, achievement and student growth. Notice student growth is the same as it was, but achievement goes down because now we add in high school completion. So, another indicator for high schools is four-year cohort graduation rate, so of students who started in ninth grade, what percentage of them in those four years graduated, as well as extended engagement, so students who stay for a fifth year, do they graduate after the fifth year? Or students who are, you know, are they going towards their HISA, their GED, as opposed to dropping out? And then, they also score the dropout rate for the school. So, that's at, those all of them represent 20%. Again, no ELL. And then, absenteeism shows up for high school, but also percentage of 11th and 12th graders completing advanced coursework, so AP courses, dual enrollment courses, or other reverse courses, and the state has a whole list of what those courses represent. So, again, we get a score on each of these targets, each of these indicators, and it's compared to the target that they've set for us, and then they get weighted, and that's where we get our percentage points. So, both the school and the district have a percentage score. It measures, again, the progress towards the targets which the state has set for us, and that progress gives us kind of the classification. For this data, it's only one year data, but in the future, they're planning on looking at multiple years, and it gets a combination of all the students and then that lowest performing subgroup. So, let me show you what that looks like. So, first, like I said, each indicator's gonna get a point, and this is their point system. So, the goal is for that target right here, three, that's the goal, that you met the target. Obviously, we'd love to see the target, but 75%, that three, is what districts and schools are shooting for. If you get a two, it means you did improve towards the target, but not enough to meet the target. One is no change and zero decline, meaning you've actually gone backwards in your scores. So, here is for the district. So, first thing I'll point out is the lowest performing subgroup category, so these, this area right here, is missing for both. That's because we didn't have 20 students that represented a lowest performing subgroup across these two places, which is MDES and 7th and 8th, because the elementary school in 7th and 8th grade took the next generation test last year for ELA and math, and 9th through 12th took the legacy, what we typically know as the past, uncast. So, they do, like Mr. Lynn likes to say, statistical acrobatics, but really what happens is, if you look here at the ELA achievement for, basically, 3 through 8, we could have gotten four points and we earned two. Math, we could have gotten four points and we earned one. So, two is approved, one is no change, and then science achievement, we got four out of four. So, what that, what happens is, that gives us seven, and that number seven is weighted at 67.5%. And they do the same thing for the growth, so two out of four, two out of four, four is our total growth points, weighted at 22.5%. And then, down here, chronic absenteeism, again, this is 3 through 8, is a one out of four. So, that is weighted at 10%. So, our overall weight for 3 through 8 is that 55%, meaning we, creates 3 through 8, we met 55% of the targets they set for us. Then, we look at 9 through 12, the same exact thing, except it adds this here, which is the four-year cohort graduation rate and the extended engagement and the annual dropout, as well as the advanced coursework, or advanced placement courses, or honors courses, and that gave us a total of 37%. And then, together, our total district score is partially meeting targets, which is 50%. So, again, the goal is to hit the 75%, which is meeting targets, and then we fall right in the category of partially meeting targets, meaning we've moved towards the targets they've set, but we haven't quite met them yet. Questions on reading this term? Read this. I know it's kind of small, under paper, but...
You've actually attached it to the...
Yeah. Oh, yeah, it's on the back of my folder as well, yeah.
Can you go over what the age of the high school, like...
Yeah, so I'm gonna go into each, I'll go to each school individually, yep. So, MDES, again, we were able, based on the size of the school, we have a lowest performing subgroup, so they get combined. So, you can see the places where, you know, a three out of four, that's the goal, four of four is above, a two out of four means making progress, but not there yet. So, the combining of the all students and the lowest performing subgroup was 72%, right below the 75%, that's the goal. So, partially meeting targets, but really close.
So, it's really important to note that achievement is valued more than the other indicators. Achievement, remember, is 67.5% of the total score, so from a teacher's perspective, it's tests are valued more than homework, right? They're worth more. So, achievement is worth two-thirds of the, you know, is worth more than the overall. Growth is next, and then the additional indicator for us in elementary school is only absenteeism, chronic absenteeism.
So, how, why do we have zero in absenteeism? That's a lot of absentee, absences, right?
Because it declines. Yep.
So, they set a target for percentage of kids who are considered chronic absentee. If we didn't meet the target, but moved towards it, would be a one. If we actually didn't meet the target and went down, then it would be a zero. So, we had a few more kids who were chronically absent last year than the previous year.
So, if you traditionally have a great number of kids coming to school, it's really easy to not meet your target. Is that right?
Like, what is the target?
So, like, that doesn't mean kids aren't coming to school. That just means wherever we were, we didn't get better.
Right.
Do I have that right?
Do, like, you know what our target is? What is our target?
I don't know the exact, I can figure, I can find it for us.
Is the target...
Like, do we have a high level of absenteeism?
At the elementary school? And I think it's something that Mr. Glazier's been working on, working on and focused on.
Yeah, I don't know the target either, but chronic absenteeism was a concern when I came in, and it's something that I am trying to work on. There are a couple avenues that I can use to try and, you know, encourage families to bring their children to school. I think it's, a lot of times, it's a parent issue. I mean, I think at the elementary school level, it's certainly, certainly at the middle school, high school level, too, but, so there are a couple court-based avenues that I am pursuing with families, trying to get them back in school and changing that number, because it's certainly, you know, we certainly have, you know, 10% of 180 is, you know, 18 days, and that's a significant number, and we have kids that exceed that by considerable amounts. So, definitely an issue and something that we're working on.
I mean, is there an amount of days a kid missed, can miss before they have to stay back? I mean, is there...
I think that's, on a, really on a case-by-case basis, there's no specific number. The state of Massachusetts recognizes the number 14 as the year-long number that a child should miss, like, for given, you know, given sicknesses, or, you know, taking an early vacation day or something like that, 14 is the number. We have kids that approach 14 halfway through the year, and so, we, my counselor and I are working on getting attendance letters out. We're just finishing for a semester, so getting attendance letters out to anyone that has more than five or six absences, reminding families that they, you know, getting their kids to school is a really important thing, and we recognize, people get sick, we recognize that sometimes you take a vacation, but, yeah, 14 is really the number.
But, I mean, wouldn't it, wouldn't it be that the kids that are chronically absent, it's, it's not because they're taking vacation, there's some reason...
Agreed, I'm sorry, yes, it's true.
Why they're not coming to school.
I think it's that 14 recognizes that sometimes kids might go on a trip, or they might, but, you know, Mr. Lynn and I have had several conversations about, you know, particular students and chronic absenteeism, and, you know, we can hold students back. The statistics are not great for students who are held back beyond about second or third grade, that a lot of negative impacts go up, like early dropout rate, or drug use, or crime, those tend to increase if children are held back after about second grade. We also look at, will the child change? So, that was, you know, Mr. Lynn and I had a long conversation about that, is, is the situation gonna get better if we hold the child back, or are they just gonna be a year older and still facing chronic absenteeism? I don't, I don't, I don't know if there's a right answer to that question.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, I guess my, my point was, is that, you know, more than likely at the elementary school level, like someone said, it's parent, I think you said, it's a parent issue.
Yeah.
So, what, are there supports in place to help the families that are having trouble getting the kids to school? I mean, is that something that we can pursue?
I think it's probably something we should try to pursue. I think, you know, in our community, we do not have a truancy program, as some districts have one. I don't know whether truancy has been looked at as a crucial element in the past. I think it's something that people have talked about, but it hasn't really been addressed. I, I need to do some research and find out what other communities are doing about truancy, but I think it's certainly something we need to talk about.
Right, I guess, going back, I mean, and going back to my question, I'm not really thinking about it as a disciplinary action. I mean, I mean, in some cases, maybe you have to do that, but if, just, I remember a story that there was a woman that, if her, where she lived was not on the bus route, but her kid was too young, and they couldn't walk to school, or something, and if her car didn't work, she couldn't get the kid to school. There was some problem, all, you know, frequently, and why the kid had frequent absences. Is there, are there services we can help people with? I mean, maybe not in North Brookfield, because it's too small of a community, but is there stuff like that out there, do you know?
I don't, I don't know any services, at least in North Brookfield, I really don't.
But, I mean, like, just in general, in the state, I mean, do we know...
I don't think so.
There's not.
I know Worcester sometimes reimburses for Ubers, things like that.
Right.
We don't really have that out here.
Sure.
I mean, we, our options would be like a van, which is about 200 bucks a day.
Right. But, I mean, is it something, I wonder if it's worth looking at other rural communities that if there's, because I'm sure this is an issue in lots of places in rural communities, what other options as a community we might be able to help?
Yeah, like van pulling each other, or, you know, some sort of, it takes a village type of mentality.
Right.
I think our biggest challenge is that social-emotional piece, that the kids, when not coming to school regularly, isn't because parents don't want them to come, it's because parents can't get them to come because there's some significant challenges. It's, I wouldn't even categorize it necessarily as, as like truancy in the sort of more traditional sense of the word, like kids skipping school and no one knows, kind of, you know, the movies kind of stereotype. I think it's kids who are struggling with some, whatever challenges they might have, social-emotional challenges, we'll keep it very general, and, you know, from, you know, the most typical one that we see very often in schools is that school anxiety piece. You hear kids struggling with anxiety, and, you know, and, you know, there's a point where, for parents, even parents with a lot of resources and skills, they struggle with this. So, I think we really need to look at, you know, what's going on with families and look for supports. You know, we've added, you know, school counselors who are a wonderful resource, you know, many of our programs support those needs, but the needs are greater than the supports that are available. We really do have to reach out outside to see what else is out there. But, I would, I would categorize this as really social-emotional challenges that families are facing, because I've worked with lots of parents who look at me and say, I really don't know what to do, and it's frustrating for them, and it's, and it's challenging because as kids miss more days, when Mr. Glazier says 14 days, that's like the maximum. That's the point, if kids don't show up for 14 days in a row, technically, we can unenroll them by law, but what does that do? I mean, that doesn't solve the issue. You know, in regards to consequences, whether it's, you know, court, whether it's, you know, keeping kids back, those don't work for these issues. Keeping kids back, the research is pretty clear. It'll, it has an impact for maybe a month or two, and then it sort of tails off, and people tend to revert back to the mean, where they were. So, I'm not sure that's the, you know, those consequence-based solutions are always the right ones. They're certainly one tool. Sometimes getting into court allows judges and other resources to help, you know, whether it's Department of Children and Family, Department of Mental Health, there are resources that judges can access that we can't.
Some of the local mental health agencies, too, will go in to do in-home services, but that's gotta be something that the parents are interested in doing, having someone go in in the morning and help with morning routines, help get kids ready for school. We've tried to get some of those services in place for parents, but like Mr. Lynn said, it's sometimes an obstacle to get people to come into the home to support some of the families. So, we definitely, we definitely explore any options and any resources that people come across. I'd love to see them, because it's, it is a struggle, and I think it's something that needs to be looked at, because it's a one, or a zero out of four is a number that jumps out at me in the minute I saw it, and I, it's something I need to address.
But, there's also the reality of what Mrs. Clute just said, because if you had, if you had zero percent chronic absenteeism last year, how do you improve on that?
Hard to go up.
You're gonna get a zero, it's gonna go down.
So, the target number is tailored to each district based on previous data?
Yes.
So, it's a moving target essentially?
Yeah. So, for this year, it's just based on last year's data, but the goal is, over time, they'll start pulling gears together, so we'll be able to actually see kind of our own trends.
Well, that's why I asked if it actually was an issue or not, because...
Well, I mean, I think it's an issue regardless of the score on the MCAST, but...
Even one, even one student making that number come down is just an issue, yeah.
Right.
Can I just ask, do you feel like you and the school counselor are sort of proactive in sort of reaching out to families, just because, I agree with Maria, it's nice to be able to support those families, but unless you know what's really going on, sometimes that's hard, and so I'm just curious, like, are you guys reaching out, and are you sort of like getting that information?
I think, again, I think the families that we have challenges with around absenteeism are the same families that we are communicating with about other issues, so we know the backstory, we know the history. But, like I said, it's sometimes hard to get advocates to go into the home or to get them resources we provide. We have, Miss Outuse has a list of community-based resources that she'll hand to families at a five-year meeting, or, you know, at a parent conference. There definitely, there are just some community-based resources, but, yeah, I think we're trying to be as proactive as we can, and I think, again, prior to, two, two years ago, there wasn't an attendance letter that went out, you know, so we're, we're doing attendance letters, we're reminding families the importance of coming to school...
Yep.
...on a regular basis.
Yep.
Even for, you know, even for a family who did, who did take a vacation or something, it's still an important number, that even if you were away for a few days, that cumulative number is important.
Yeah, okay.
So, if we take a look at the high school, so, again, no number for lowest performing subgroups, or lowest performing students, however, they do 7, 8, because it was a different test, and then 9 through 12, and they're combined at the bottom. So, you can see there's some areas where, again, it's a number of points, so four out of 12, and that's weighted at 67.5, because, again, this is the K through 8 version. The same scores represented over here are weighted at 47.5, and that's because, again, we add in the high school graduation information at the bottom. So, the overall number is 36%, which still falls in the partially meeting targets category. Definitely is below, it's 36% of the percentage points that we could have earned, so out of 100, 36. So, again, if you take a look, here...
So if we take a look at the high school. So again, no number for lowest performing suburbs or lowest performing students. However, they do seven, eight because it was a different test and then nine through twelve and they're combined at the bottom. So you can see there's some areas where again, it's a number of points, so four out of twelve and that's weighted at sixty-seven point five. Because again, this is the K through eight version. The same scores represented over here are weighted at forty-seven point five. And that's because again, we add in the high school graduation information at the bottom. So the overall number is thirty-six percent, which still falls in the partially meeting targets category. Definitely is below. It's thirty-six percent of the percentage points that we could have earned. So out of a hundred, thirty-six. So again, if you take a look, here's chronic absenteeism for seven and eight. We got a four out of four. Same for nine and twelve. Advanced coursework, we got a zero out of four. Four out of four for extended engagement rate. That means students who might not have graduated in the four years, they're finishing either in a fifty or they're going on to some sort of program that is helping them either earn an equivalency or a different diploma. So the other area, so science, you see here, there's science in the middle school, four out of four. The high school is zero out of four. It's an area we want to, you know, explore a little bit more. And then again, same ELA and math. Again, towards the target that they set for us, we declined in those two areas. But ELA and the achievement ELA was three out of four for the nine through twelve. And then again, so if you see the percentages over here, it's just what amount of weight each of them gets.
So we don't know the, the target? Like, we don't know what the goal was?
We can find, I mean, there's, I know there's, we looked at one spreadsheet that had like seventeen, it was, had all the targets. Again, this is new to us too, so we're still figuring it out.
But it's not abundantly clear. They're not like North Brookfield is. I mean, like.
They don't give you, here's your target and did you get towards it? They just tell you whether, they don't give you like where you've landed compared to that actual target. They just give you a score based on where you landed.
But the achievement has to do probably with numbers or percentages of kids who are meeting the standard? Can we assume? Okay.
Yep. So it would be, you know, towards either advanced or proficient towards that kind of goal, which.
Based on one baseline year?
One baseline year.
Okay.
Yeah, so two thousand seventeen.
There's so many, I, I think that, that, that some of this data really is a one-year anomaly. You notice that the amounts of zeros and fours.
Yeah.
So it's either all or nothing.
Yeah.
Which means that comparatively, it's either more or less than last year.
Either, either way, we're polarized.
I think so. I mean, I'm, I'm simplifying it a little bit. There's more math that goes into it. But when I look at it, I feel like, okay, we were either better than last year
Better or worse.
or worse than last year. And for us, even if they're doing it as percentages, for us, because we're so small, percentages move very quickly.
Quickly.
With two, three kids.
Yeah.
So that's, that's a concern I have. The other thing that you'll note, right, is in the achievement versus growth places, like our, our best scores.
Jean, can you like use your laser method?
Yes, so this is the growth.
So I'm going to direct Jean to the English Language Arts Achievement in High School, which is the three out of four, right? Those are our best scores. Almost always, every year, our high school, our tenth grade English scores. But if you look at our growth in that same area, it's one out of four. Now go over to Science eighth grade. Science eighth grade was four out of four. Now that has traditionally been our worst performing group with MCAS.
Right.
It's probably still the worst performing.
And they don't do growth for Science, but they're, but we did probably much better than we've done in the past. And I know the scores there were not nearly as good as our English Language Arts scores, but comparative, either to the rest of the state or to ourselves, and I'm not quite sure either. It was very, very good. Now, if you look at the raw scores and say, wow, we really need a lot of help in that eighth grade Science area. We have three years.
Right.
And there's lots of reasons for that. But suddenly we're four out of four. It's, it's, so to me, when I look at this, it's, I think it's because it's one year, it's the first year, there's a lot of wide swings
Okay.
in the data and, and in some of those areas, like advanced coursework completion.
Yeah, I noticed.
Kids in dual enrollment.
Yeah.
We've got as many kids in AP classes as I can find and we've got the Mount Wachusett Community College class. And we got zero out of four.
And you've had those for a while now. So we have had kids in those.
Right, but it's the total number is less.
Is it just because it's like the same amount as last year or less than last year because you have less students or something?
The Mount Wachusett course class enrollment dropped a little bit. That happens, you know, time to time.
But given our size.
It's higher this year.
But given our size,
Yeah.
you drop a couple of kids from Mount Wachusett and all of a sudden you say, we got less kids.
We had maybe three or four kids two years ago that were doing dual enrollment. Last year, we only had one. I don't think we have any this year. Seniors that are doing, uh, one. Like that was a.
Yeah, we have one school choice.
So, you know, it's, it's so difficult to look at that number and draw a reasonable conclusion that, that that's a, a good judgment of
Yeah.
of what's happening in the school.
The zero out of four for the four-year cohort graduation rate?
Yeah.
I just feel like.
I mean, our rate, when you look at it comparative to the state, it is not a problem.
Right, right. And then, but you get a four out of four for the expanded.
Right, but when you have thirty kids graduating and one does drop out, that's, that's three percent.
Right, but it's hard to do better. Right, four-year cohort graduate, zero out of four, that looks awful, but that's because it was okay.
And it might have been.
There's one last, maybe one person then.
Exactly. Because it was a little bit higher than the year before.
Yep.
If they're one kid. And, and when we get to senior year, we have kids that, that don't make it. A lot of those kids just got to us. They've been,
Yeah.
they shop around, they're trying to find a place that's going to get them their diploma and, you know, they, that's, I'm, I'm sure that we've sent kids that are, that are affecting other people's graduation rates and other kids,
It happens.
schools are sending, you know, that, that's a, that's part of that transient community that is looking for a cure to a deeper problem. So, so here's where I jump in and I say, this is why I don't sort of buy in and say that we need to fix MCAS. And I know that's sort of the gut reaction when people see it in the newspaper or wherever, but, but the idea of trying to fix it based on a test score is, is a huge mistake. And, and we often end up, you know, I do the same thing, saying, how do we fix that? And, and that's a mistake. And that's when, when people ask and say, well, what do you suggest? I suggest that we build programs. So if we want more kids in advanced coursework, we have to provide programming so kids will find that pathway. And then this will report that out over the long term. But I don't want to fix advanced coursework because the MCAS school, we get zero out of four. I don't want to fix the elementary school chronic absenteeism because we get zero out of, I want to fix it because getting kids to school is really important. That's how they learn. So build the program and the results will come. It's important to review this data. It's important to use it, but not in isolation. Not just look at it and say, good school, bad school, good district, bad district, good teacher, bad teacher, or good student, bad student.
So I, I don't disagree with you and I don't disagree with you and I don't, the problem is, I think, from the perception point of view. So you need to go out and you need to make that argument, not to your fellow professionals, but you need to make the argument to the community that because we are a small school, the way that this is weighted, you know, affects us more. I don't know, is it worth even going to the state and saying, can there be groups of small schools grouped together?
Yeah, I'm not going to, I'm not going to argue with the state about the system. It's, it's the system we have. But what I would say is the solution in MCAS scores doesn't lie in fixing MCAS scores. It lies in improving our program.
Sure. So what, how are we going to improve our program? I, I also think Maria, it's naturally going to fix, fix itself. Because, because we're, we only have that one baseline year. Once we start pulling more data. I understand, but right now, what you have. So, okay, so no, let, let me just, let me just say, I'm sorry, let me just say this. So you want to fix, you're going to improve the programs, so you want to do that anyway, right? Want to improve the programs. So you talk about it every day. So give us some examples there.
This year, we opened up a STEM program. The ability for kids to access science, technology, engineering and math and from starting at kindergarten and working their way up and through is going to impact ultimately MCAS scores. Will it be this year? I hope. But that's not why we started a STEM program, so that MCAS scores could improve. At the elementary level, we spend time in Eureka Math and we trained staff to work with other staff in improving math instruction. That's program building. These are the kinds of things. At the high schools, we went to our P, P, POG program where teachers, we have groups of teachers working in different areas. One is in project-based learning. So the idea of kids being able to connect subjects. Building programs leads to student improvements over the long term. It's not fix one thing. Because I, I guarantee I can fix something, but we'll break something else in the process and it won't be sustained by fixing it. That's how it works. I've done this for, I did this for years. I think I've described it to you before, of chasing my tear as a principal. Fix one thing, broke another. And it went around and around, four, five years in a row, until I just said, I'm not going to do that. I'm crazy. It doesn't work. So that's when I sort of adopted the build programs. And what does that mean? And every time we talk, we talk about building programs. We don't necessarily identify it as building programs at the time, but when we put into place professional learning programs or, you know, about elementary reading and math instruction. We look at high school engagement from trying to put in place things like, and be having success, things like student-led conferences and the site council and kids taking ownership and seeing the importance, the rigor and relevance of what they're learning. That builds upon itself. And kids over time and staff over time, the capacity gets better to, to, you know, to be able to take an MCAS and do well, to take SATs, to look at attendance data, to look at behavior data, to look at whatever other measures we want to look at, and we should see improvement over time.
When the results, I guess, I mean, these are all the accountability ratings, right? But the actual scores, when those come in, do you guys as administrators get those in like June or July typically?
August. August, we get the preliminary stuff.
So I'm, I mean, I, I fully agree with all the program building. I mean, that is so important and that is really what education is about. But I just wondered to what extent you guys have identified like specific areas? Like I'm, I'm looking ahead to the slide that talks about areas to investigate math at the elementary, middle and high school. Like are there, you know, have you guys looked at the data and seen, for example, fractions? Those need to be focused on, you know, or something? Have you analyzed the data to that extent so that it can be targeted? And is that tied to teachers' goals and is it tied to, not teacher evaluation, like you need to get a good score, but, but sort of evidence of those areas that need attention? Like.
It is.
It is.
Teachers are writing their SMART goals based on
Based on?
assessment data from the previous year, assessment data that they have currently in front of them.
Yep.
Yeah, they are actually, it's, they're tying it to their evaluations in some cases, yeah.
Because I mean, and I think this is, this is a problematic measure, obviously, because it's new. But I also think that when the results are published in the paper and people see like, you know, no one exceeded the standard, you know, community members are going to wonder, you know? Not just parent members, but, you know, and I think if we can, from a PR point of view, really emphasize what is being done to address.
Yeah, teachers do, I mean, will look at the scope of the standards.
Yeah.
See where like the highlights are for students who struggle. They have the opportunity to dig into questions if they want to. But also the, the thing about being a new test, especially for the next gen,
Yeah, yeah.
right, the exceeding expectations is low across the state.
Right.
They've set the bar very high for what exceeding expectations look like.
Yep.
Last year, I think we had three students, eight who've got an exceeding expectation on something and it's gone up this year a couple.
Okay, yeah.
So, you know, they're balancing it out that as well at the state as they develop the new, the new test. But teachers do get a chance to kind of dig in with the principals or myself.
And sequencing too. Like I know Jean has done a lot at the high school. We're going to start to dig into the elementary school, the scope and sequence. So not just what standards we teach, but when we teach them.
When, yeah, yeah.
The order that we teach things. So are we covering everything
Is it being reinforced?
in appropriate time? Are we cycling back to important concepts that we know they hit multiple times on MCAS? You know, we do look at that data. It's an important part of the work that we're doing. I know, you know, MCAS is not the be all and end all, but it is a part of the, you know, the, the bigger picture that we're doing with, with kids, actually.
And we need to look at MCAS. We look at all of our data. So in the elementary level, when you say reading, we look at MCAS scores and we have BAST data. We have a lot of other running records that teachers keep that, that give a much wider look at student achievement.
Well, I guess what I, what I would ask you, and, you know, and trust me when I say I don't think schools should be measured on one test. But, you know, let's say, you know, we, we go to our select board with our budget and they come back to us and say, well, you know, we're giving you this money and this, you know, you're not improving. So how are you going, I, I guess I would like to see you guys develop a layperson friendly discussion that helps people understand that, you know, the, you know, small school, our scores are going to be affected by the number of students that, you know, you are focused on, the areas that need to be, you know, where you need to work on growth and sequencing and I'm sorry, all those educated words that you're using. You know what I'm saying? Well, I, I guess I would like to see you guys be able to talk to people and say, listen, you know, kids are learning and, and this is what they're learning and, and, you know, you know, that, that the scores are not a true representation of what we're doing. So that's what I would like to see.
What, um, computer, were these tests, tests computer-based and if so, at which level? Then like do.
Last year was all at six, the six and ten.
Uh, third, third.
Third also, right.
Fourth and fifth.
Yeah.
And so is that, is that an issue as well? Is that because?
So they compared, they compared to taking the same test on the same mode. So it should be mode to mode. Like if we took paper for third, compared to paper for third, took paper for sixth. So they've done that to kind of balance it out. Because the first time you take a computer-based test, your scores are typically lower because you're getting used to the system.
So, so the scores are going to be challenging to compare again because now everybody's taking a computer-based third and sixth. Everybody's taking a computer-based this coming year and we had some paper-based last year. So again, next year's scores will be harder to compare.
Do kids have sufficient opportunity to practice on the computers? I mean, because I just, I practiced online. I'm like, this is hard.
It is.
You know?
We try to give kids much more access to Chromebooks. The actual practicing of tests is not necessarily something that we do a little bit of that as it gets a little bit closer, but we try typing on, you know, essay writing, you know, and practice prompts. They're typing as much as they absolutely possibly can. And we're continuing to add Chromebooks and that's a big part of our budget, is trying to add more technology.
Can I just add one other thing? There is also a phenomenon that I didn't really understand until I spent some time in this district, which is the sort of cohort issue. Each grade as it comes through really has a different personality, if you will. And some have come through with a really steady, stable group of teachers for seasoned, experienced, well-versed in their craft teachers. They manage to get that sort of all the way through elementary and junior high. Others don't. And not anybody's fault, just. But you notice it substantially when you get to know them as a class. And there are cohorts that come through and there's no, there's no, this is a nice set of kids and this is a bad set of kids. It's kids that have had very different experiences educationally. And it could be subtle or it could be pronounced and it could be just, a lot of it is just luck. They ended up in a grade where they had really great teachers and these guys ended up in a grade where they had three different teachers in one year in the elementary school. And I see when they get to the high school, a significant difference. And that can also make a difference between seventh and, and tenth grade, depending on how that experience went for them. And that, I think, in a larger district bleeds out, right? It doesn't, it's not as pronounced. But in this district, I really felt like you can go cohort to cohort and before they ever sit down to that test, you can really predict how well they're going to do based on their social emotional adjustments to school. And I, I can look at this data and say, yeah, mhm, that makes sense, mhm. I know exactly where the, where the pockets are that, of achievement and the pockets of struggle. And it's not, my, my math instruction has not changed. We've had, we had a year where our math scores in the junior high were some of the, the best scores we had. Same instructors, same curriculum and very different results with a different group of kids. And part of that is the test, but I really do believe that as, as a group comes through, it changes pretty dramatically. It doesn't take a lot to change an entire cohort. Just my own observation.
I also feel really strongly that this is why you are a very key person for our district and why it was really important to have you come on board. Is before you got here, in terms of curricular work and scope and sequence, what's Is before you got here, in terms of curricular work and scope and sequence, what's being taught here? How are we building off of it? Are we teaching the same thing four years in a row? That's not serving our kids well. And so you have not been here long. You have done a lot of work in the time you've been here as our curriculum director. So I just feel like we need to give you time to work on what you've been working on and it's important. I don't, I don't think, I could be wrong, but we haven't had academic coordinators or district or department leaders at the high school. So who is keeping track of all this? That's a lot of information. How do we know that there's rigor in the classrooms? How do we know what's being taught? How do we know we're building off of things? So I feel very strongly that your position is absolutely essential and it is fledgling to the district. So in terms of that role and what you're doing and what you're looking at, that whole broad elementary through high school, right? And making sure kids are getting what they need, when they need it, looking at test results and factoring that in, because that is an important piece of information. And so working with teachers to, so that they understand, okay, what are, what do we need to do with this now that we have it? So we just have to throw that out there. No, I mean, I think, yeah, I think absolutely. And obviously, this is a new test and I, from what I understand, from what you said in the paper, you know, that it was harder, no one did as well. I, I'm just going to make the point again that, you know, I want you guys to develop your argument for when we go into budget season that explains how you're building on, on progress and making better, making the, improving the education for the kids in our portfolio.
It is tough. I mean, this, this data is not like, you explaining this is not straightforward. Like I feel like this is complicated.
Acrobatics.
Well, I mean, you know, I didn't understand it until you explained it to me.
No.
Even now, I have a basic, very basic understanding. But I, you know, it is something that I think if you-
Yeah, yeah, I totally agree on that. So the, just the last part of the whole score is a percentile. So we did the percentage of points towards the target. And then each school, but not districts, just schools are compared to all other schools in the state based on the test that they administered. And they get a percentile score from one to 99, meaning how, if they get a, you know, if someone got a 88 percentile, that means they're 88 percent better than all the other schools they were compared to.
And are elementary schools compared with high schools or just within?
Just, just within the school, elementary. Yep, elementary, elementary. And then there's, the way they classify it is there's a ninth and 12.
Okay.
But then they have a, basically a school that would fall under our junior, senior high school.
So the percentile is just like when you take your kid to the pediatrician and they say, "Your kid's at the 53rd percentile of height." That means he's taller than 53% of the kids his age or weight or whatever.
So for the elementary school, you can see, they give you the overall classification as not requiring assistance or intervention because we're partially meeting targets. That was at 72% we got from previous slides. And that gives us an accountability rating of 23, which means we've done 23% better than the schools-
Better than 23% of the schools.
Better than 23% of the schools that we're compared to.
Well, just to make sure I understand this, is it compared with all the elementary schools across the state?
Yes.
Is it possible at all to, to really pull out schools that are closer in size to us and, and look at that? Because that might, that might be helpful.
Yep, I can definitely do that. For the high schools, for the junior, senior high schools, the overall classification is requiring assistance and intervention. The reasons, I'll get into in a moment. But we have a percentile of 11. So two things that really stand out for our score and why our percentile is low. One is low subgroup performance of white students. So we have no other cohort, really of subgroup of students at the junior, senior high school that equal 20 students. This is basically our subgroup. So our largest population of students have low performance. And one of the things that we are learning, and Ms. Lynn and I have been talking, there's possible, you know, financial support from the state related to this, but we're just still digging into it at the moment. The other thing, and this goes back to the conversation about small schools, is our low participation rate of students with disabilities. So the state expects a 95% participation rate. And we had two students who didn't take one portion of the test, so our score is at 93.5.
Two students with special education means out of 30 did not take one portion of the MCAS test, so that's not-
Really threw it away.
So each kid is worth three plus percentage points and brought us below the 95%.
Right, so we get, and by a point and a half. So we got identified for that as far as an area of concern.
So we, we did file an appeal and they told us that essentially because we had two things, the low subgroup performance and the low participation rate, even if they did pursue that, we would still have the same classification. So they just-
Would have changed the overall classification for the school.
And so the low subgroup performance means that, like every school has a low subgroup, correct? It's just that this means that-
So I think, so you could have a low subgroup for white students, African-American students, Hispanic students, students with disabilities, economically disadvantaged, low income. What happens because we're so small is we don't have a number of 20 in those, so they don't, they don't record out for them-
Okay.
-as a group.
Okay.
So it just happens to be that our largest group is also a subgroup.
And we got flagged because our low subgroup is particularly low?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Because of all of the acrobatic math that we just went through.
Right, okay.
Yes.
Yep.
Well, I'm curious, so if it says requiring assistance or intervention, so what does that, does that mean they actually will assist you or intervene, help?
So, so we actually-
This is like telling you what your benchmark is.
We actually attended a webinar to that. And they have what's called a turnaround grant. And then we're eligible for the lowest amount, which is $10,000. It's a planning and implementation grant to address our reason for classification. So they introduced it today and it's due on December 5th.
Well, that's good.
Much time.
So we have plenty of time, a whole two weeks to get this thing done.
Take your time.
And get it submitted. But it is what it is.
Yep.
And we'll be pursuing that grant to support the junior, senior high with planning and implementation of, essentially what I look at as part of their school improvement plan. So it's pretty, it's, it's pretty exciting to have access to resources because usually it's just-
Do better.
Right.
Well, I'm glad, I'm glad that there are at least some resources.
So this is just a summary, it's kind of of everything. So as far as the district, not requiring assistance or intervention, they used to measure you as a district based on the, kind of the lowest level, that they used to have levels for a school, but now it's just the district overall. And then the reasons, partially meeting, that's our percentage towards the targets that they set for us. And again, no percentile set for the district. Elementary, not requiring assistance or intervention, partially meeting targets at 72%, the 23rd percentile. And the junior, senior high school, requiring assistance. And again, for those two reasons, 36 percentile percentage and 11 percentile. So talking about areas that we want to celebrate, high achievement in ELA at the elementary and the high school, science at the elementary and the middle school, extended engagement at the high school, chronic absenteeism is low at the NVHS, which is actually positive. Insects participation were high overall. Again, that one area where two students caused us to go below that 95%. And places to investigate, again, coming back to questions about what was the target? What were we trying to achieve? Math at every level, ELA and the middle school and science at the high school, looking at how do we get our students to grow, especially in ELA, and you just in the slide before, they're doing well in some areas, but how can we also have them do well and grow? We want to figure out more about the chronic absenteeism at the elementary school, as well as graduation dropout rates at the high school, and looking again at how do we, what do we offer and how can we offer more advanced course work.
So in the same way, we don't want to overreact to the data where we want to investigate now. We also don't want to say, "Oh, we're all set in English language IAS at, you know, at the elementary school because we had success." It's a reason to celebrate, but we do the same thing with that that we do for the areas where we sort of have a perceived struggle. We're looking at the data, we're trying to improve overall what we teach, how we teach it and how we evaluate and assess students so that we can continue to provide a better, you know, overall experience for kids. So it's not a, you know, "Oh, we did great in that. We don't worry about it." No, continue to look at all of it.
Thank you, Jean.
Thank you.
Thanks. So we've run over our, I think as was expected, right?
That was a good discussion.
Yeah, yeah. So I guess our next thing would be the, we know how many public participation, the school committee has no reports, so the next would be the financial update.
So in your packet, you have the updated grant and LEA budget. So in terms of the monthly grant revolving accounts, you can see that they're, Sheila is slowly filling in the, all these different grants and revolving accounts that have come through. There's a couple of things to just remind you of. The third line down on the grant, school choice, is at 706,000. That's not accurate. Don't forget, that does not include the 350,000, 360,000 that's already spent this year, in this year's budget. So we are literally the one year ahead, which is what we've always shot for. The circuit breaker just below that is for one student who is at an out-of-district placement. Obviously, we've had conversations about a second. The preschool revolving account, which will come into play later, is at a little over 21,000. I think there's about 6,000 that's reused as an offset in that. And that will be important as we talk later in the, in the agenda. Federal grants are difficult to sort of do this report for you because we get it monthly and then we spend out sometimes quicker than monthly. So sometimes you have negatives in there, even though we know we're getting certain amounts in each grant. So the title, you know, the 140 grant, which is Title II A, is about a $20,000 grant, a little bit less. So, you know, as we spend money, sometimes it comes across as a negative. And then in terms of the LEA budget, we're getting to that point where Mrs. LeBlanc, if we had made her stay, is telling me it's time to start looking at perhaps freezing the budget a little bit earlier and being cautious, particularly with some of the expenses that we are, have incurred with some out-of-district expenses. And another line to keep an eye on is our homeless transportation. We have a pretty significant, we're pretty significantly over in that because we have a couple of situations that involve transporting students, which is a requirement under federal law, the Guinea Vento Act. So in our upcoming admin team tomorrow, we'll be talking a little bit about where we are with the budget, the current year budget, and what we should be doing in terms of maybe freezing or putting a hold on some, some of the spending that we might typically do. So I think Mrs. LeBlanc has a lot of experience over the past several years, really managing the budget day to day and has a good sense of where we're at with the budget. So when she sort of has the antenna, when her spidey senses go up, it's a good idea for me to, and for us as administrators and school committee to, to say, "That's something we need to attend to and think about strongly." I think the same lines that continue to sort of come back, things like our substitute accounts, again, when a teacher goes out for longer term or, you know, whether it's maternity leave or some other medical leave that's needed, especially if it's not anticipated, we go over those budget lines. So you'll see that pretty regularly. Other than that, there's no major thing to point out. We're pretty much on track in terms of our salary lines and other, in other areas. So, questions?
Moving on to your reports.
Okay, so just kind of working through, just as a review, not so much for the board, but for the public. So the town meeting occurred last, or a couple of Fridays ago, on November, Friday, November 9. The school department did submit a, an article for that warrant. However, due to some glitch, it didn't actually make it onto the article, so wasn't able to be considered by the voters. In recognizing that there was a glitch, the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee scheduled a tri-board meeting with the school committee to discuss, "How do we address this?" And the ultimate solution was that we would be adding a, a special town meeting in late January, on January 25th, 2019. There are some dates that, that we have as a, as a board and as administrators to, to make sure that we are ready for that. One is our article is due to the town hall by January 4th. At the January 8th meeting, the Board of Selectmen will review the warrant and get it all set to go. And then on 9th, on January 9th, it'll be posted, which is the required number of days in advance. So just in terms of parents, January 25th, there will be a special town meeting here at the elementary school in the auditorium. Right now, the only article would relate to a school article for approximately $134,000 to provide educational services for tuition and transportation, which was unanticipated. A second possibility for an article, and I'm not sure how that works yet, is the idea of setting up a special education stabilization fund. A lot of districts and towns, cities have put these together because special education costs can sort of come at any time and can be pretty significant. Communities have set up these stabilization accounts. For those of you who follow town politics, it might be similar to the snow and ice stabilization account that the town currently has. If we have a significantly challenging winter, it's money off to the side that's in this account that's, its total purpose is to deal with potential overages and that's what this would be. So-
Did the, did the Finance Committee and the Select Board seem open to putting an article like that on the warrant?
They were very interested in that.
Okay.
There was a great discussion and thought that it would be valuable to get more information. I forwarded some information that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education have put out on special education stabilization accounts. And I've also reached out to several of my colleagues whose communities have gone forward with that, just to gather more information.
Okay.
So we're gathering information on that so that we can get that information not only to you, but also to the Select Board and the FinCom about just the process for setting it up and the best way to go about that.
Well, seems like a good time to try and convince people that we need it.
It was also helpful because Representative Berchem was there and so he was able to speak to the fact that he's heard this discussion in many other towns. And so, yeah, I think it's something that other towns are dealing with too, not just us, so, yep.
So any questions tonight? You can certainly contact my office. Many members are available as well, so. Elementary school roof project update. The weather continues to be an impediment to completion.
It will be done.
Snow, ice, rain, wind, changing clocks. We, we just can't wrap it up. We will at some point.
It looks really good so far, though.
It really looks nice.
So the only thing we're as left is the awnings, right?
So they have a few more panels. There are maybe, I want to say 15 to 20 panels in different locations, kind of cut-in panels.
Right.
The awnings need to go up and, and then kind of the substantial completion paperwork stuff they have to do. Our, you know, the town building inspector has to inspect and all those kinds of wrap-up things.
Right, paperwork.
But the actual work, you're correct. So we, we're staying with it, it's just, it's really hard when-
Right, later than expected.
Take the worst year ever to do a roof, yes.
Is adding, is adding that incentive or whatever to change?
Speed things up.
Could it speed anything up?
So that is still being assessed. So that is still being assessed. We started assessing it on November 1. Unfortunately, as you know, earlier in the project, we tried to be, to work with the contractor on the schedule, given, again, weather challenges that we had during the summer. However, extending their substantial completion date was also done under the condition that no further extensions would be given. You can't come back to me and say, "I couldn't finish because of the weather."
Right.
That's ultimately how we landed. And because our OPM, our project manager, which is Skanska Corporation, and our project architect, Dietz and Associates, are required to stay on the job as part of a school building authority job, we have to pay them. They were supposed to be done and out of here.
Right.
So the contractor doesn't pay them, the town pays. We had to, we have to.
So, but we're assessing them since the beginning of November?
But we're assessing the contractor, MDM.
Right.
A thousand dollar a day.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
Called liquidated damages.
Right.
And we're using those funds.
Right, to pay the.
To pay the extended time that the architect and the project manager need to be here.
Right, that seems fair.
So it's, you know, it is what it is.
Right.
It's not a direction you want to go, but at some point you reach.
Yeah.
A critical point of it's now costing the taxpayers more money.
I'd rather see that than them asking us for more money.
Right.
But is that, does that seem to be helping them be faster, or? I don't know, I guess not.
I don't want to say yes to it.
Light a little fire under somebody?
So a week ago Thursday, so not this past Thursday, the Thursday before, we had our regular building meeting, and the panel guy said, "They're going to be done next Thursday", which would have been this past Thursday, all the panels. And I said, "How many do you have left? You have seven days." He said, "I have 30 left." We still have 15. But when you have snow, and when you have rain, and you have, and they can't work, well, again, I'm not here to tell them when they should work. You know, it's a little rain, go out, get them up, let's go.
That's what I'm thinking.
But I told them, I said, "Don't make promises you can't keep." And they go, "Guaranteed they'll be done." Well, Thursday passed, and then I'm done. So, you know, we really have no choice but to hold the general contractor because he hires the panel guy.
Right, yes.
Panel guy doesn't work for me.
So he's probably assessing them a finance wise.
I would hope.
Well, it goes all the way down.
I would hope he would do that. He usually travels like that, exactly. So we'll get there someday.
Is it, is it like essential we get the awnings up, like for winter? Like, is that, like, if we don't do that, is that?
Well, I think it needs to be done, because otherwise they have to come back and do it, so, right?
Yeah.
We cannot close out the project until it's completely done.
Completely done, so. And so we're paying Skanska and Dietz until that happens? Okay.
And thus the liquidated damages for the general contractor until it's done. So we started that on November 1, and it's now November 19. So it's a fairly significant amount of money.
I think it just like gets us buttoned up for winter. I mean, we've already gotten our first snow, you know what I mean?
It's going to snow again tomorrow.
Throw a tar ball over it because it's, winter's here.
So any questions on the roof project, other than it's still going?
It will be done eventually.
It will, and it looks very nice. We got a nice, they did the check on the roof, they had the manufacturers there of it, and they come out and they test it, or do whatever they do.
Yeah.
And it passed with flying colors and.
Good.
The contractor got very good reviews on the quality of work, so.
Good, that's very good to hear.
It may be taking a long time, but it's very good quality.
Good, excellent.
Yeah. Contract negotiations, we are underway. We do, we have had our ground rules meeting and our first negotiating session. We do have two additional sessions scheduled on December 5 and December 12. Then we'll be moving forward with this process, so we're ahead of the game in terms of timing. And it's just a matter of working through the proposals and then figuring out where we're at. I think we have a good group on both sides, so we're moving forward and making progress.
Excellent.
And I'm sure we'll have an update for the committee, where we're at moving forward. And that would happen during executive session because we are in the negotiations, so. In a future school committee meeting, we'll have an executive session where we update the committee. Next on my list, I included in your packet some thoughts and some, and a proposal of sorts on 21st century learning. And earlier I was asked, what does it mean when you talk about building programs? And I have two pilots that I want to present to you. Without reading the whole thing, one is that each, there's a pilot at each school. The first is at the high, the junior senior high, around a blended learning model. For those on the committee that were here last year, I think you recall Mrs. Powes, Mr. Evans, and I went and visited a school down in Providence that is implementing a blended learning model that I thought was fantastic, I think we all did. And we thought, how do we do, or take some of what they're doing there and sort of meld it into what we could do here? And what you have there on pilot one is our thoughts on how to be able to do that. We have contracted with Edgenuity for them to provide us with the math courses we need in terms of the site licenses, to provide us with the professional development for the five teachers. Actually, it's five teachers that are going to be participating in this pilot. Mr. Evans has worked with his staff along with Mrs. Powes to identify which sections of math students, which, each teacher will have one section, so we can identify a Chromebook card for that section every day. And to implement this blended model, and a blended model, and its easiest way to describe is kids work in an online world, but also have face-to-face instruction, what we think of as sort of traditional classroom instruction with a teacher. All the research really points to that as being the strongest model. A totally online course or totally face-to-face, if you look at results, you know, compared research results, and a blended model where a little bit of both actually outperforms both.
So when will this, when will this pilot take place?
This is happening now. We actually met today as a group.
Okay.
We have to plan the professional development. We're looking at December for that, for the teachers. And we're looking for this pilot to really start with the start of the third quarter, which is like mid-January.
Okay.
And the hope is to train the teachers in December, give them access to the courses in late December. Many of the teachers said, "Boy, if I could look at this over vacation, that would be great."
Right.
And then for those classes to be introduced to this blended model. Now, doing this blended pilot for five teachers for one half a year is really, if it's that alone and that's it, it's kind of useless. Why would you bother? The idea is, we want to wet our whistle, figure out what works and what doesn't work for us. Because my goal in the future, for next year, is to expand that pilot so that more teachers can explore that blended learning model, which means we are going to be looking to purchase more Chromebooks. We will need to purchase a site license for Edgenuity, which is a much larger expense. But I think this is, this can really address a lot of what we talked about earlier in the MCAS presentation, when you say, "Access to advanced courses." Well, the school we were at, kids went at their own pace. There were kids who were finishing all of their high school requirements by the time they were a junior. They were attending college, doing college courses through dual enrollment in many cases.
So.
Kids who struggled were able to go at a pace that made sense for them rather than being force-fed into higher-level courses where they weren't ready. So go ahead, sorry.
Sorry, so the second half of the year, you're going to pilot this with five teachers, and then there's some sort of evaluation process at the end of the year and decide what works and what doesn't work, and then you would go forward and?
Yeah, so the evaluation is really about, in two areas. One is around student engagement, you might call it a satisfaction survey. How did the teachers like this model? What worked, what didn't? How did the kids like it? What worked, what didn't? But then there's got to be another side to this where we look at sort of student assessment results. How did they do? Did they, did they know more math at the end of the year than we could have predicted they would with a more traditional model, or even just an online model? So we're developing that. I mean, you know, there are things out there we can look at. But we can't go forward with the pilot and then use the eyeball test and say, "That seemed good."
Right, right.
And then invest a lot more money.
Right.
We want to measure it in some meaningful way and decide, is it worth, one, a larger investment? Two, how will it change if we do want a larger investment? Because it might not look the same. But the idea is to open it up to more teachers next year so that more teachers can explore this. And as we do move to a one-to-one initiative, where every student at the junior senior high eventually will have their own, I'll call it a Chromebook right now because that's the divisive choice, it seems, that this would be available on a much larger scale because we grew it slowly. We allowed teachers, most of these fail because of teacher, lack of teacher training. The teachers don't get the kind of support they need. Number two, they fail because there's no investment in sort of changing practice. You know, just giving them another, say, "Hey, kids can practice on this," or "Use it." It doesn't work. So we have to train teachers, and then we have to help them change their practice so that kids can benefit from this model that I think most kids would love. Not all kids, but most kids. But we have to, we have to set it up to success, and that's really what the idea of a pilot is, is to sort of put the things in place that we know of right now and figure out what we don't know. And then to expand the pilot next year allows us to invest a little bit more, but not go all in.
So would you do it, like, five teachers at a time? Or possibly five, then 10, or something like that?
So we talked a little bit about that in my head, and again, this isn't the final say, but the way I originally thought of it is, we have five teachers each doing one class this year, five sections. Because we have a Chromebook card that we can do that with. We have another Chromebook card that's still available for signup, so any teacher can get it if they need it. If we added another Chromebook card, we could do it, we could use that for, to extend the pilot. So now, instead of seven periods, and we're only using it five for this one, but there are seven periods available. So two additional teachers could try it out for a section next year. And if we added a card, seven more sections would be available, so you could have, because each one, like, each person could, you know, seven different teachers could add one section.
Sure.
To try it out.
Right.
If 14 periods were available next year, rather than the five we're doing this year, that would expand it, so that's really the idea.
So it sounds interesting.
Does Edgenuity offer subject-specific lessons, or is it really just a platform? And that, I mean, I'm just trying to grab, like, how is it different than like?
So it's a platform, but it is a core course, lessons and modules.
So there's content that teachers can tap into. So it's much more than like Google Classroom?
Yeah, oh yeah, it's content.
Yeah, it's like a recorded lesson, like you will watch a certified teacher teach a lesson. There's assessments.
With the, go ahead.
Just to say, the like true blended model of it is that teachers can, one, they can make changes themselves, so they can add, you know, if there's a project that they always do that they know kids really do well with, they can add that in, or they can remove things.
Yeah.
And then they can assess where students are, so if, like, this group of students needs tailored instruction on this type of topic, and this group needs something else, they can really facilitate that.
Yeah.
So it's really customizable, but it provides kind of the curricular foundation for the teacher to use and build upon.
And it's really designed to be done with a teacher.
Right.
Not to be done by yourself in front of a computer screen. It is not.
Yeah, my understanding of blended learning is that a lot of the computer work goes on in the student's own time, and then when you're in the classroom.
Yeah, same.
That's when you have the face-to-face.
So the model we're really looking at is this idea of facilitated learning, where you as a teacher could pull, you know, those four kids, because they're struggling with this concept or skill, while other kids are working individually on their, wherever they are.
Okay, yeah.
And then maybe you pull that one kid over because he needs help, and then you pull these seven kids over, and then you realize, boy, I really need to do this for everyone. And you stop everybody and say, "Everybody, look up here, we need to, you know, do this lesson." So it's, it's much more guided and facilitated than turn them loose and look at some dashboard that says, "Maria's doing great, Ruth's doing great, Rich needs, you know, isn't quite getting it done," kind of thinking. It's really interactive.
I can imagine as, as we're able to grow it, you know, assuming that it's successful, that it, students will start using it more, maybe at, you know, at home. Some students, you know, when we went to the school, there was a student, like you said, that fit, like, literally finished high school, or started their junior year because they were so motivated to do a lot of the work independently. But right now, we, right now, for the pilot, we only have a certain number of, you know, license for free right now.
Right, okay.
And then also, like, we want to make sure that, you know, we're providing this technology in school, and how do we grow it for our community who might not have technology?
Yes.
In the future, if this is, this is the direction we're going. So I could imagine that there'll be kind of that, a little bit of both.
Yeah, yeah.
As we move forward, if we continue with it, so.
Sounds interesting. Look forward to hearing more about it.
So the second pilot is what I affectionately call the extreme classroom makeover. And just like the show, our goal is to provide a teacher, teacher teams, and it's sort of morphed over time, a grade-level team, the opportunity to rebuild their classrooms into a more sort of 21st century learning environment. Attended several professional conferences, and we've read Learning Transformed, and the classroom hasn't changed in 150 years. It looks the same as the one school, the one classroom Schoolhouse did, with rows of desks and the teacher up front, and many of our classrooms look like that, some variation of that. And for those of you that have seen the maker space, look very, looks very different than the more traditional classroom space. Well, what we want to do is offer teacher teams the opportunity to redesign their classroom spaces into the classroom of 2018, but beyond, 2019, 2020, because it has to look different. The way we teach, the way kids learn is different from 150, 200 years ago. And unless we redesign the learning space, which has such a huge impact, and a lot of the work our elementary teachers have done in the readers and writers workshop training they've had, really highlights how teaching has changed. So we want to give them an opportunity to build a classroom space that's different. Anything from paint colors, which Mr. Shaw loses his mind every time we talk about paint colors, because what does he want? He wants that off-white, sort of sterile classroom environment.
I gave him that article, you know, the same one I sent you.
I know you did, and he, he looked at it and went, "Ah." But he sees the maker space and goes, "Oh my God, orange and purple, and what are we doing?" But that has a huge impact on learning. The types of furniture, if you, if you look through any professional journals, it's very flexible furniture now. We still have very traditional desks.
Well, actually, a lot of the classrooms have tables and things like that. But, and it's, I think it's a really awesome idea. I, I'm, where's the $10,000?
No, this is a draft. We're still working on all the, sort of the numbers, which is why in the write-up, I really put when Jean built this wonderful little flyer, she put that number in there.
Okay.
We just throw a number.
Dream number, dream number.
Why not?
Absolutely, absolutely.
But really, the idea is, what should a classroom look like? What should it have in it? Beyond a teacher and students, what should it, what is the most optimal learning environment for, for us, for the students of 2018 and beyond? It's really hard to get people to sort of understand that in a conversation. It's a lot easier to see it and experience it. And I think we'll have teachers who will be head over heels to say, "And what we did is, I designed like a grant application. What is it going to look like? What's it going to have in it?"
Why?
And why?
Yeah, that sounds, it sounds awesome. I think there's plenty of teachers at the elementary school that would love to, to think about that. And can we do something for the cafeteria too while we're at it?
Do an extreme cafeteria?
To update it?
Sure.
Just so it's not yellow. Anyway, yeah, that's really cool. A great cool idea.
So when you hear me say, "Build programs," I think this is the way to build programs. Blended learning, changing the environment, kids teach in. We'll talk about one later. We got a donation from Bay Path that I think is program. We got a donation from Bay Path that I think is program building. It, it allows kids to access something they would never have a chance to do. Mrs. Dubuque will talk about program building in a little while.
I just, I just do want to interject one thing. I mean, I think this is an awesome idea and I'm sure that the, the extreme makeover thing. I, I just want to say though, I mean, that I do think that many of the teachers do a wonderful job making their, you know, their classrooms a, a warm and friendly place for learning with them.
Absolutely.
So, just, just to put that out.
They would all benefit.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
If they could put different things in it.
Yeah, if they have $10,000, absolutely, yeah.
It's, we're not changing.
Right.
How they work with kids or what they think of kids.
No, I was, you know, I'm talking about the physical aspect as well. But yeah, absolutely. Having the idea to do different things would be wonderful.
And then my last thing is the site council. I was asked to, to put this on.
So, the site council had invited, well, we sent a student over to, to update the school committee on its work. And at 7:09, I got an email saying, "Gee, how come nobody's here?" I guess it's over at the high school. And we didn't really instruct him on these. We sort of assumed he knew the school committee was here. He was an eighth grade student.
Oh, my gosh.
So, and to confuse it even more, I posted a sign for my school council that said, "School Council Meeting 5:30 to 6:30." And he said, "Oh, did they change the time to 5:30? I must have missed it."
Anywhere.
"No, actually, it's different. School committee, it's at the elementary school." By the time I got back to him, it was 20 minutes later and, and I must have missed him. So, he's not here and I apologize.
Yeah, actually, I think he is here.
Like I was saying, if he's here, he's hiding over there behind Ethan. He's very big and hard to see around.
And I have to say, let's commend your persistence.
Yeah. Grab to the microphone.
Come stand at the microphone.
Devin, I'm sorry, I didn't even see you. Thank you.
Tell us your name, all the way up to the microphone.
There you go. I'm Devon and...
Devon, sorry, Devon who?
Devon Ladue. And I'm a member of Site Council. And Site Council is just a, basically, a group of students who, we usually get together every Monday during school. And we, well, like, what we're supposed to do is go over rules and we can put in new policies, but we have to vote on it for our class. And recently, we're just working on a proposal form in Site Council, so.
Great. And so, this can be like anything for the school? Like, you guys kind of have the ability to make recommendations or feedback or?
Well, for some things, we have to bring it to you guys, like, for homework.
Okay.
Because we were told that you guys have a homework policy, so if we wanted to change anything for that, we'd have to come to the school committee.
Okay. So, what's, like, do you have one you're working on right now? You want to give us an example or?
We've had a lot of things, but we were kind of focusing on the hats rule.
Okay.
So, we have more freedom if we want to wear hats in school, not just on Fridays.
Okay, so, right now, you're not allowed to wear hats except for on Fridays. Is that inside the building? Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and you want to see if you can update that policy?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
So, there's a couple of different roles on the Site Council. So, it's students, one or two from each grade, as well as some teachers. And looking at, you know, bringing in the, the ideas. And then there's a process similar to a three reading here for the policy. They, you know, it's a discussion. There's three meetings where they need to review and gather information. So, Devon is the school committee representative, so he'll be coming to every school committee meeting to kind of just hear what's going on for the, the district, but also to share things. And we also have, so a student is the moderator, so it's all student-run. But there are adults that are part of the committee as well.
You know what that sounds like to me, Jean? Sounds like a great opportunity for a newspaper article.
I did post about it on my new Facebook page today.
Okay.
So, we can check that out. But yes, I think once we get up and running, you know, I think like Devon said, we're just, I think today was the first meeting that the student was running, the meeting, fully running the meeting. He did a great job. But we have secretary, other positions as well. But Devon is our school committee rep.
So, were you all elected by your class? Is that how it worked?
Yeah, we had elections during lunch, I think, like, a couple of months ago. Yeah, but we have two, two people per grade and they were voted in by their grade.
And then when all the students came together, they voted each other for the, the roles. And again, so I'm the admin representative and then there's three, four teachers on it as well. So, everybody were voting members of this, the Site Council.
Who is the president?
The current, the moderator is the term, moderator.
Moderator is Riley.
Riley Lamy, so senior. And the goal, I think, in the future is to pull in more community members. So, maybe a school committee representative, parents or other people from the community to make it really a full community, right, conversation about these things.
So, Devon, in the future, you can work with Mrs. Powers and Mr. Evans on maybe some type of update on some of the discussions your group has had. Because this, this school committee meets monthly, I mean, every month, and we can get you the dates. So, you'll have three or four meetings that you'll sit in on during that month that we'd love to hear about. You know, what are the, what are the big ideas? What are the discussions that you guys are having? Just updates. You don't even have, it doesn't even have to be something that you voted on yet, but just, you know, we've talked about hats and homework, but there might be other things that come up.
Yeah.
Sounds good?
Yep, sounds good.
Is this different from the Senate that was proposed last year?
Yes.
This is that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Rigby came and presented?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
We finally settled on a name that we all.
Site Council. Okay. Good, great leadership, exposure, opportunity. Yeah, good for you. Thanks a lot for coming, Devon, and thank you for making sure that you made it even though there's a little bit of...
Yeah. I apologize. We should have told you it was here. That was our fault.
Now, you go for next month. There you go.
All righty.
Thank you, Devon.
No problem.
Thanks. Thank you.
I take back everything I said earlier.
All right, it's your turn, Mr. Evans.
Thank you. Speaking of a great newspaper opportunity, and yes, I've already contacted them.
Awesome.
They haven't gotten back to me though.
Keep going, keep trying.
On Wednesday morning, we have a half-day Wednesday. We have two events going on at the high school. The first is Life as a Grown-Up and the second is Life as a College Student. So, Life as a Grown-Up is adult members of the community who are coming in to present, give a presentation on their career, their vocation, it could be on their, their journey to their particular place in life. We have 13 presentations for grades nine through 12. That's more than double what we had last year when we did it in June. We're doing it earlier this year because some of the feedback we got from students last year was they wish they had seen this earlier in the year instead of at the end of the year because they felt like it was motivating. So, this year, we have nurses, law enforcement, banking, auto body, pretty wide personal finance lawyers, pretty wide variety of, somebody from the, from the Quavon Reservoirs coming in. So, it's a, it's a nice mix of, of adults that I think will provide some nice insights about what it is to be an adult to our students. So, thank you, Ms. Tucker, for volunteering to come in and, and present.
Thanks.
And to all of the community members that are coming on Wednesday. Really looking forward to it. Later in the morning, we have a panel of college students that would be speaking with our juniors and seniors. That's Life as a College Student. And we are up to about seven college students.
It was five earlier. And multiply it.
We keep, we keep adding more and more, so.
Good.
Yeah, two more I found out about earlier this week. So, and that was all started last year by our school council. I had to be confused with the Site Council, one of the school committee. So, the school council took that on last year and helped to organize and get the volunteers together this year. So, we're excited about that. I wanted to congratulate our fall sports teams. All four of our teams, well, the three sport, league, three team sports, field hockey, boys' soccer and girls' soccer, all made districts. Field hockey won their opening round of, in the districts, and then fell to perennial powerhouse Quebog in the second round after giving them a scare and tied 1-1 at halftime. But they, they beat Maynard, won in double overtime, actually in a shootout after, was tied after two overtimes. It was a very exciting afternoon. I also wanted to highlight the cross-country team, which won their league championship. And, and two students in particular, Cameron Laraya finished first overall in the league meet and Ethan Hildick finished second overall. And, oh, there he is right now.
Can you, can you come in front of the camera?
No, swinging around, just show it to you, yeah. And that...
And Ethan Hildick.
He ran faster during the race than he did. It's, the cross-country team started about five years ago and really was just sort of a ragtag group at the beginning and they're, they're now the, the class of our, of our league. And so, congratulations to Coach Murray and all the participants there. They really did a nice job. Winter sports starts next week. Tryouts for boys' basketball, girls' basketball and cheer start on Monday. Get your packets in by Wednesday, please. Say it over and over and still there'll be somebody coming in on Tuesday saying, "Was I supposed to hand this in?" So, looking forward to that. The school play this year will be Aladdin Junior and auditions will start in December. Do you have a date on that yet, Ethan?
No, neither do I. I've thought my head's in January.
Okay. So, waiting to hear on the dates for auditions. And lastly, I want to congratulate our robotics team. They were awarded a $5,000 grant from NASA, which is, pays for their entry fee for this year and gets them their kit of parts. It's a big deal that we got that grant. We got it last year as a rookie team, which is really, it's, it's supposed to be for rookie teams and some second-year teams also get it. So, it was a little more competitive this year, but we managed to rope one in as well. We've also had a very successful fundraising drive, getting corporate sponsors. And I want to thank all the various local community, organizations and businesses and individuals that have supported the team. It's really, really, really great. So, we should be in good shape this year and then also put us in good stead for next year as well.
I just have two things. One, the fundraiser that, or the, the evening, unfortunately, I canceled last week because of the weather of inviting the kids from the elementary school to come and, and have a challenge. Awesome idea. Love that idea.
One week from Thanksgiving is the rescheduled date. So, Thursday 29.
Okay, 29?
Thursday 29. I just put that on our Facebook page and I haven't put it out, you know, last email yet, but that will, well.
Very cool.
What time is that at?
It's 6:00 to 7:30. You know, it's a, bring your own building materials, whatever you have. Most kids have a bucket of Legos at home or some other Canucks or Tinker Toys, whatever. So, you bring your own bucket, you get table space, build your own thing for an hour and then the robotics team judges and awards prizes. And you get to drive Furious George around too.
Oh, yeah. And then just, and you may be aware of this, that some of the kids made the All-Star list for the conference on the field hockey and the girls' soccer.
Yeah, I don't have those, those names in front of me. Maybe you do, Ms. Tucker.
I do. For girls' soccer, and hopefully I pronounced their names right, Gabrielle Cornier?
Cornier.
Okay. Christina Ayah, who was just here earlier, should have congratulated her. And Samantha Riscatelli. And then for field hockey, it was Lindsay Schimmelpenny, Mackenzie Allen and Sydney Messenger. And I don't know if any boys from the soccer team made the All-Star list. I did not find that information.
I don't have that either, so I apologize, but thank you for highlighting those. Thank you.
Mr. Glaser.
So, I'm going to definitely keep my report brief. In addition to what I wrote in my monthly report, I wanted to just thank a couple of people. So, we were able to put together nine complete Thanksgiving meals for families in our school. I wanted to thank the Congregational Church here in town. They helped supply some of the food for that. We have a, we had a food drive as well, this family-based. I'd also like to thank the Tarantino Foundation, which is an organization that Trish, Trish Tarantino has started in honor of her husband, who passed away in the line of duty as police officer in Auburn. And they, they purchased the turkeys for all, for all nine of those families. We also have a community Christmas drive, holiday drive to, to provide gifts for families around Christmas time. And her organization is going to take 10 of those families to purchase. So, it's just a, a great community-based organization. We have a teacher here in our school that's giving back and it's just really fantastic. So, I want to thank her and her organization for that. I wanted to just announce that I'm really excited for the Positive Behavior Intervention Program that we have sort of rolled out this year, a little bit more than last year. We've earned our second all-school reward. And this Wednesday morning, this coming Wednesday morning, we're going to stop everything that we're doing around 10:30 in the morning and just the kids are going to just get an extra opportunity to play. We're going to have games, we're going to have opportunities to go out in the hall and kind of mingle with other classmates and other grades even. We're going to open up the gym, I think, for a period of time for the kids to use. So, we're just going to give the kids an opportunity to just kind of let it loose a little bit on Wednesday as an all-school reward, something that they had talked about and something that they had asked about doing. So, I'm really excited about that. Mr. Lynn, I don't know if you had in your report to talk about the upgrades, the front door and security cameras set on?
Mr. Shaw has it, actually.
Is all it's in his. I just, if you've noticed, when you came in this morning, this evening, we have the new door in place. The electricians were here finalizing all the electrical whatnot to get that door installed. So, now we have two security doors at the front, which we've been talking about for doing for quite a while. That is now in place. And the electricians were also here today, beginning the installation on the security cameras, which we were able to purchase through a couple of grants that we received. So, I'm pretty excited about that. I think we're going to have between six and eight cameras here at the building when the project is completed. And we have zero at the moment, so it's a pretty huge increase for us. I'm really excited about that. And again, it couldn't be possible without some grants that we received, so I'm excited. I believe that's all the additional things I wanted to add.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Dubuque?
Yeah, so, a couple of points I want to touch on as a follow-up to the Run Walk and Roll Against Bullying. It was really fun, was a, a big success. I had a lot of people comment that they can't wait till next year. Neither can I, so we look forward to making that an annual event. During the MCAS presentation, we talked a lot about implementing programs to improve student achievement and academic growth. So, some things that have been happening this month to kind of help foster that. The high school sped team, along with some general educators, Belle, Jean and I, were kind of looking at, you know, expanding our co-teaching, kind of looking at how to make classrooms kind of more along the lines of the universal design so that it's helpful to all learners in each, each classroom and kind of building that support between the general ed teacher and the sped teacher. We also had some professional development from the BCBA, and she ran some RBT training, which is basically kind of like an ABA-type format to help the pairs, you know, build their understanding of supporting different types of emotional regulation, coping skills their understanding of supporting different types of emotional regulation, coping skills, and other related kind of necessities for students who really struggle in accessing the curriculum due to these underlying emotional stability disabilities. So, that was very successful in moving forward with, with those trainings. Also, we talked a little bit about building attendance in the MCAS presentation, and to kind of go along with that, I had gone to a training for building educational stability for highly mobile students, and that includes students in foster care, students who are homeless, migrant, or from military families. That directly impacts attendance a lot of the times. So, the state actually suggests that it become a school committee policy, something that the school kind of implements as a protocol, a way to kind of get that information out to families who have children in those situations, which basically kind of just tells them what we offer for services, kind of that community outreach piece of it. So, the second page in my report, I kind of submitted a sample policy. At some point, the policy committee can kind of look that over, and maybe it's something we can implement going forward. Just a quick update from the state, they did add some language to Chapter 71 of the general laws in the area of dyslexia. So, Connecticut currently recognizes dyslexia as a disability, Massachusetts is now moving in that same direction. So, what that really means is that the state is going to be giving us protocols and procedures to be following when we get special ed referrals. So, basically, this is kind of a big movement that's gonna be happening in Massachusetts, and it's gonna require, you know, some programming and some thinking about how to support this area of disability. That's all we have for tonight, any questions?
So, my, the majority of my report was the MCAS presentation, but a couple other things to highlight. One is, I've gotten the instructional leadership team off the ground. We've had our first meeting on November 1st, and we have, I have six, six teachers, two admin, a school committee member, and two, and two students. I'm looking hopefully to add some more parents, or guardians, or community representation, and the goal of the instructional leadership team is to look at curriculum across the board, instructional technology, and professional development, those are our three areas. So, we'll be doing some kind of gathering of some information, and making recommendations to the administration about what we, as a team, feel are some areas of growth for the district and the schools. So, I'm super excited about that. Our next meeting is early December, so we're meeting once a month. And then, the other, kind of keeping the highlight, I've talked a lot about the curriculum summits that I've been doing with the different departments at the high school this year. Last year, I met once with every department at the high school, and this year, I have the luxury of meeting three times. So, I've done my first round, which has led to a number of different things, including the pilot for Ed Newty, as well as, you know, teacher collaboration between courses. So, there's just a lot of really great things that are coming out of those. So, I'll have two more meetings with the departments this year, and I'm also meeting by grade with elementary starting in January. So, our focus for that will really be looking at math curriculum. But, again, just the ability to be able to have that chunk of time, really concentrated in on what is, what's happening for the department, and kind of what are the visions, is really helpful, and it bleeds into, obviously, the teacher's everyday work, but bleeds into staff meetings, and bleeds into curriculum hours. You know, we, our next curriculum hour at the high school, we're going back into the departments, and Mr. Dubuque's gonna come work with the special ed department, Mr. Evans is gonna work with social studies, I'm working with math, and so it's just a good way to not only have those standalone meetings, but also to continue it throughout the year with, with work, so. And I started a Facebook page.
Nice.
Curriculum Office Facebook page, so...
I think I saw something earlier.
Today, I posted about the site council.
That's right, yeah.
That was our meeting this morning, and it was really great, like, I said in the post, like, the passion that the students had, and just the leadership, you know, obviously there's adults there to support, but it is really the students.
I look forward to hearing about the head controversy.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure you will.
These summits, when do they happen? They happen within the school day?
Within the school day, yep.
Within, so, teachers are just given...
Release time, so we bring in subs, and they would, so they're two-and-a-half-hour meetings, and, yeah, so we would bring in subs for the, the teachers, and then we could really do kind of have, it's like a mini-retreat.
Okay, and when you referenced a curriculum hour, what is that exactly?
So, there's five curriculum hours within the teacher's contract throughout the year.
Okay.
After school.
Right, so you're talking about, okay.
Yeah. And so, our, my work with them bleeds into that a little bit.
Okay, great.
So, these meetings every Monday, is that what you said? Or it's not every Monday?
The site council?
Yeah.
It's every other Monday during our flex block. Right now, that's the schedule, yep.
Imagine Learning Pilot, sounds pretty cool.
Yeah, so, we were, the French River Education Center, which we are a member of, has provided a pilot of this Language and Literacy Program in the, the platform's called Imagine Learning, and it's actually a blended learning model, which is, teachers use it alongside of their reading and writing workshop to pinpoint specific areas of struggle, whether it's through, you know, different word recognition or syllables, and we've been able to use this pilot. It's been the third year that the French River Collaborative has been offering the pilots to districts in the area. We hadn't taken them up in the past two years, so we said, "Why not, we'll do it." So, we have 30 licenses, which means that we only really get to a limited amount of students. So, we, there's three teachers that are kind of taking the lead on it, Robin Pratt, Nicole Sutka, and Jamie Nason. And we're looking, one class, Andrea Myers, third-grade class, is using it as, it's intend, it's intended as a blended learning model, so she's using it in that format, she's using the Chromebooks three times a week to use the Imagine Learning Platform, and students, she gets a report, just like you would for that Ed Newty program, and she can see by, you know, skill, what group of students need what support.
My daughter is in the class, and she has given it high marks so far.
Very good, yes. And we're also, there's some second and fourth graders that were also trying it as a, you know, we, they selected some students that they thought might benefit from trying an online program, because we wanted to see, it's an expensive program, but we wanted, you know, wanted to see what other ways we could use it besides just as a full classroom, so...
I love that you're piloting it to see, yeah.
Yeah, and that's, you know, that's the, the goal of the program, and I, before we even said yes, I spoke to a couple of different people in the area who had, they had taken on this pilot, and a good majority of them continued with the program. So, that's that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
So, Mr. Shaw and Mrs. O'Hara also submitted reports, and just real quickly, Mr. Shaw mentioned that the SNOPE event last week, all of the equipment passed the first test of the year, and even the newest piece of equipment did well, so that's good. And that the, they're, the program they instituted, the, what's the name, Thank You School Dude, which is basically a, an computer-based work order program, and that it's working really well, and they're able to get to things more quickly, and that he also has, working on a certification for the Massachusetts Certified Public Purchasing Official, and that he finished the first section, and he passed the first test, he was happy to say. And then, Mrs. O'Hara is happy to report that the state reporting that was, is due in the fall has already been submitted a month ahead of time, and they are, if you can help me out here, SIMS?
SIMS, yeah.
OK.
EPMs.
Right, so what do those mean, just real quick?
Student Information Management.
Uh-huh, okay.
So, yeah, so we have to submit to the state data fields.
A lot of data on the kids.
Every kid, every staff member, every corps, every grade, every, everything has to go in and has to be formatted correctly, it is not uncommon for that report in a district our size to have 15,000 or 20,000 errors.
There are many errors.
She has zero at this point.
All right.
To have a pass.
Awesome, we're certified at, yep.
Crazy.
So, and then also, really exciting that, and Mr. Glazer touched on this, about the new security system for the, for the elementary school, that the doors is part of it, but also cameras, and that originally, they were, the plan was to do a few cameras at a time, and then our friends from the North Brookfield Police Department had a grant that would allow the school to install the entire system that we were, that they originally wanted. So, that's awesome, and thank you so much to the police department.
Yeah, it was amazing. The original proposal from the security company was for about $28,000.
Right, yeah.
And we were only able to really muster up about 14, and Chief Smith had access to agree, but covered the other 14, so, pretty amazing.
Wonderful, thank you so much to our friends.
And they'll be in by the end of the week, I think.
Uh, yeah, so the first, the first install was Monday, was today.
Although Cindy did say the camera guy was out sick today, so...
He was, he'll be back tomorrow.
He came in late today, he did come in. Did he come in late?
Yeah, he did.
So, next up is your...
Yeah, so, under all business, I gave you a review of my superintendent's goals for the year at the last meeting, and what you have in the packet is, I guess, a more detailed accounting of, of goals and action plans. So, just as you recall, you might recall, educators in Massachusetts need to have a student achievement goal and a professional practice goal, but often administrators have additional goals, so I not only have those two goals, and I also have a district goal, and then I have two school improvement goals, one for the elementary school, and one for the junior, senior high. What I provided you essentially was that action planning template of, that I've used in, and we have used in other, on other tasks, or other initiatives. And so, my goal was to outline sort of what I hope to accomplish, and a little bit about how I hope to, to accomplish it. There are things that are gonna happen, whether they're a goal of mine or not, I think they're really important things, so the student achievement goal was all around improving science, science instruction, and science outcomes for kids. And the biggest piece to that is the, the strategies that I, that I outlined here, one is by adding a STEM feature, which we did, by providing the curriculum summits and department meetings and curriculum time that, that we have, professional development, and then the purchase of materials in science, which is ongoing, and then the professional development that Mrs. Powes and a couple of other teachers have taken advantage of through our Department of Education as ambassadors, science ambassadors, and just some great stuff going on. So, those are the strategies, and then you can see the action steps that go with it. There's a lot here, I don't want to go through each one, because we'll be here till Wednesday or Thursday. I would ask you to, to please ask me any questions about any of the goals and action plans. It's certainly probably not as, it's probably doesn't encompass everything that we do. I tried to pick the things that were most important. You know, just as a review, goal one, achievement goal was around science. Goal two, as a professional practice goal, was around safety, and you've seen a lot of the safety stuff happening, ongoing, and is continuing to happen as we just discussed. Goal three was the district improvement plan, as we've talked about before, this is the last year for our district improvement plan, and we needed to renew, revisit that, and goal three is about that whole process of engaging the community and developing a, a new district improvement plan. Goal four is the first of the school improvement plan goals, and that's for the high school, and it's really about that blended learning model in terms of supporting student engagement. And then, goal five at the elementary school is about continuing to improve our literacy program, and to really be part of that discussion, because I was not a part of it as much as I should have been last year, although, I guess, being new, I was just sort of wetting my, dipping my toe in, but Mrs. Pratt has welcomed me with open arms to that whole literacy world, and that she is so expert in, and I think myself, and Mrs. Powes, and Mr. Glazer being regular parts of that literacy discussion, I think will bear a lot of fruit in terms of our understanding and knowledge, and also programming, in terms of professional development, in terms of instruction, in terms of, in the long-term student outcomes. I'd say in the short and the long term. So, those are the five goal areas, you know, again, I'd be happy to answer any questions about those, if you don't have any, or they do need to be voted on.
I don't think any of them come as a surprise, I think they're things that you've been working on and leading up to, and so there are discussions we've had, and it makes sense that they're your goal, because you're, you're working on those things, and they're areas that we need to improve. Motion to approve the goals. Second. All in favor?
All right, great. So, we have some policies, this is the, is this the third reading for these? Yes, third and final reading for a whole bunch of policies here, which is great, because this updates our policy manual quite a bit. So, I'm just gonna read them, and then we're gonna, I think we vote on them, right? So, AA, school district legal status, AB, the people and their school district, AD, mission statement, AE, commitment to accomplishment, EFC, free and reduced price food services, EFD, meal charge policy, KA, school, community relations goals, KBA, school parent guardian relations goals, KCB, community involvement and decision-making, KBBA-E, we're going to remove, that is a sample notice to custodial parent, KEB is also going to be removed, that's public complaints about school personnel. DA is fiscal management goals, DB, annual budget, DB-1, annual budget, DB-1-R, budget apportionment of expenses, DBC, budget deadlines and schedules, DBD, budget planning, DBG, budget adoption procedures, DBJ, budget transfer authority, DD, funding proposals and applications, DGA authorized signatures, DH, bonded employees and officers, DI, fiscal accounting and reporting, DIE, audits, DJ, purchasing, DJA, purchasing authority, DJE, procurement requirements, DK, payment procedures, DKC, expense reimbursements, DJC, we're removing, that's bidding requirements, and DJG is being removed to vendor relations. And just to clarify, the ones that we are removing are recommended by the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, so it is a recommended, a common removal of policy.
I'm gonna do it in two motions. Motion to remove KBBA-E, KEB, DJC, and DJG.
A second. All in favor?
Motion to approve AA, AB, AD, AE, EFC, EFD, KA, KBA, KCB, DA, DB, DB-1, DB-1-R, DBC, DBD, DBG, DBJ, DD, DGA, DH, DI, DIE, DJ, DJA, DJE, DK, DKC policies.
All in favor? All right, so...
So, we'll be updating those, those will be on the website sooner rather than later, instantaneous-ish.
Yep. Excellent, great.
Yeah, it's excellent.
So, we have preschool program expansion?
Yes.
So, last time we were here, we talked a little bit about the potential for growing our preschool program due to increase in population, and we did talk about this as good news, bad news. Good news is, is when we need to expand a program, it's because we have more kids. Bad news is, when we need to expand a program, it also, reimbursement for those kids doesn't come until the next year or beyond. So, we had a lot of conversation about how to get there from here, and Monique did a great lion's share of the work on, on sort of designing what this presentation is and what we're recommending. And, you know, one way or the other, we need to provide the services for these preschool students, so we either need to expand our program, or we need to plan to pay for these services to happen for our incoming preschools who require special education services, so that's where we're at. Let me turn it over to Monique.
Yeah, so we've been talking a lot about the numbers, projected numbers coming in, there's a lot of conversation about that in June, and then when I came on, there was a little more discussion around it. Now that we've actually done the screenings, and we have, you know, physical SaaS it to work with, and referrals to work with, we have a more concrete idea of where we are. Just some kind of background, as Rich said, once a child turns three, the school district becomes responsible for them programmatically and physically. So, what that means is if they require special ed services, we have to provide them, and if we don't have space or a program to provide that in district, we have to provide it somewhere else. That also leads transportation to that, the same place. The law around the classroom sizes says that you can have a maximum of 15 students with seminary sped students, or 20 with no more than five sped students. So, currently, we have the AM program, and we have the PM program. So, our AM... So our AM program is full in compliance. The PM program is also full, but has recently flipped. So now we're out of compliance because those numbers should be offset. We have applied for a waiver that is kind of still.
Out there.
Being reviewed. Anticipated enrollment additions that we have. So currently, right now, we have eight active sped referrals. Some of these students include some medical necessities. We also have two waitlisted typical peers. So we have about 10 definite eight that we have to legally service. Our trajectory kind of shows that this is, you know, an increasing pattern. So our numbers have been going up over the past years and will continue to rise, you know, with all the intervention services and that the KDC does and that's happening out of the community. So we're kind of looking at next year, a definite 21 for continued enrollment. The census had about 56 three and four-year-olds, which we didn't count prior to the August 31 cutoff. So from screenings, we usually get about 20 to 25 students who come in for screening results. So we're estimating about 46 for next year. We don't have the sped number yet in that, and that can always kind of increase as the year goes on.
Is that actually, sorry, on that last slide, is that actually number of kids on the left? Zero, 10, 20?
Yes.
Number of kids?
Yep.
Okay.
There's no points involved. I don't, I think, point score, is that?
This was just like part of the template on the slide that it wouldn't let me change that.
Yeah, it's number of kids, yeah.
Number of kids. Number of kids.
So just a quick out of district, if we were to send these, currently eight students for referral out, kind of some monthly prices of some local comparable programs would put us at that cost.
And that excludes transportation.
Correct.
That's just the tuition.
Correct. Transportation is about $98 a day for one van and that seats about five kids. So kind of looking at the expense comparison, we have, there's money that is going to be spent. So we can look at it as, you know, kind of trying to cover the rest of this year, which here's the transportation because we would need two vans, tuition for the students, and then the medical assistance.
Tradition.
So we're looking at about a little over $70,000. So full year would be about $100,000, a little over $100,000. If we were to expand the program, if we're looking at about.
$70,000 for eight kids.
Yeah, but you know, it's $46,000 for tuition, I guess. I mean, sorry, transportation.
No, I know, I know. Shouldn't it be more for the tuition? Let's buy a car and have somebody drive it. Can we, honestly, like, I don't, like, I literally don't know what to do with this. That's, it's so much money. Our last meeting was about tuition and transportation, how much money it is and.
Can the record reflect that the numbers listed it around giggles?
I feel like it's laugh or cry. It's laugh or cry as well.
Well, and that's why we're making the recommendation we're making.
Now, yeah.
Because we need, we need to have additional space.
So yeah, so that's obvious, yeah, so.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
So with the expansion, we would be able to fill the classrooms being compliant and service the.
I don't think we hit that second column on that first page, on that last page. So expanding the program.
So if we, if we went with the expansion option, it would be about $50,000, right? So that covers the teacher for half the year, the medical assistant, instructional assistant supplies. But the classroom is then set up and ready for next year. Because if we don't expand, you know, this number is going to continue.
Just to grow.
Next year and just increasingly get higher and higher and higher.
So no transportation costs to students? We do an in-district program?
Correct.
Anticipated, obviously, we don't know all of it, but.
Right. I mean, unless, of course, they're disability.
Right.
Specifically related to a need to transport them.
But we're not seeing that, right?
In-district transportation's a lot less than sending them to another.
Correct. So like even if they needed it, it's still significantly less.
Right. And it wouldn't be all eight.
Right.
I mean, a contract with our current bus company.
Instead of a different company?
Possibly a different company, right? Because they can't always accommodate our needs.
So for the teacher, we use $27,000, which is about half of what we use as a master's step six in our budget this year. Instructional assistant, again, about half. The medical assistant, what we did was we used the numbers, like, we get this from other districts. They use the, you know, we have speech and language pathology assistants. That's where most of the other districts have on their contract for medical assistance. And then we just, you know, we made sort of a guess on amount of money we would need just to supply. You know, we do have to find a room, you know, and that's going to displace somebody. And it's not ever easy, but we really need to do that rather than send kids out. And I think the model is something that is warrants further discussion. Sorry.
Don't steal the problem.
No.
So with the expansion, we'll be able to open the two classrooms, expand the numbers for the rest of this year anyway. Looking forward, you know, we would want to be able to create kind of tiered models, offer different options. Some families don't want to send their children every single day for a whole day. Some parents do. So in order to kind of tier the options, the pricing, it'll allow for a lot of flexibility for families. And then it will also allow us to accommodate more students. So kind of to be able to do that, you know, we're thinking, reach out to the waitlisted typical peers that we have waiting to enroll, advertise to our community. We spoke with Madbrook and, you know, she's always turning people away since Appleseed closed. So kind of partnering with them in a way where, you know, if she can't take it anymore, send them our way. Advertise to town employees and surrounding districts. Possible timeline we're thinking about, we'd like to start as soon as possible. As about referral timelines have already begun. Hoping to open in January and then kind of enroll for a period for typical peers, for residents to apply. And then expand that even further to maybe town employees, just to bring in the typical peers. And then for enrollment would be, you know, looking out of district and they would then be taken in.
So that, that, those pieces would take your approval because there's no such thing as school choice for preschool. It is open only to people who live in town. But if we opened it for typical peers only, we could not take people, you know, like, if I had a child and I wasn't bringing up to preschool here because I'm a town employee, they could not have any special education services because that would be the responsibility of people from the town I live. So we want to be able to, we want to be able to fill the spaces for typical peers. So as a school committee, you could open it up to town employees only than people from other towns. But if we do it in a tiered kind of way where it's, we open it up to town residents first and then open it up, we could fill those slots of typical peers.
Can we save them?
Why not?
So you would advertise.
You have every right to do that.
You would advertise it as a typical peer, like a model program. So a lot of larger city districts.
Can I, can I ask you a question? What are you asking? Can we do what?
Well, I, it sounds like you're saying we would not provide special ed services.
We would not.
No, no, these are out of district. So if you're a town employee.
No, I get that. I get that.
So we look at it like choice. You don't get to decide who gets to come in. There's no pre-screen. You don't get to know who is and who is not special ed.
We only need to supply programs to our students with special education needs. That's the only requirement at the end.
Because it's preschool because of the age level. Is that correct?
And because they don't live here, we don't have to have them. They can't come here and get services.
So preschool does not operate like school choice?
No, not at all.
I'm just asking, because at the school I work with, this very question came up. And we, the district decided to stop allowing teachers to bring their kids because of this very issue.
Right. If they have special education needs, it would refer back to the sending district, just like school choice does.
So what happens if a student starts coming here, their preschool, and it turns out they had, you found out later on that they had.
Same way it does for private preschool. Same way for private preschool.
Right. So if in the middle of the referral came through, we would, as part of the referral process, it would refer back to the sending district. And they would have to do the evaluations and the referral process. And if they were found eligible, then they would have to service them in the district.
So just, I mean, do you feel like you need to open it up to town, to out of, out of district people? Don't you feel like you're going to fill it with residents anyway because of the?
Yeah, I mean, so it's a thought. So it's kind of like, if we don't get enough, move to the next year. If we still don't have enough, then, you know.
Is it something that we need? Do we need to decide on all three of them now? Or can we start with the first one and then see how it goes? Or do you feel like you need to know?
You can start with the first one. This was a thought for the remainder of this year.
Right.
Right, to fill in because the need for typical peers is going to be the next kind of hurdle.
How many, how many kids do you need?
We should be a little over 50% regular end to special ed. So in our current model with 15 kids, we need a minimum of eight regular end students.
So for morning it's eight, afternoon it's eight, so you need 16 kids?
Yeah.
Okay. But if you don't, I mean, if we don't have them, we don't have them. And if it's mostly special ed kids, it's mostly like.
No, that's why. But it can't be that way. We can only have five kids, five special ed kids in each class. Unless we have more regular ed kids.
I guess, I guess conceptually I get it, but if you're a percentage, you're a percentage. You have this many kids and 60% of them require special needs and 60% of them require special needs. We don't get to really change that.
But then we don't get five in each class, is what they're saying.
So one of our challenges is, one of the things that I don't think we've been as good at is outreach.
Yeah.
You know, when Monique talked to Madbrook, they talked about the idea that they get people all the time who they can't, they're filled. But we don't have any type of, you know, at least Monique has laid the groundwork to work with them and not to steal from them, but to take the overflow.
Well, I think probably two things is that, A, people may not know that there's a preschool at the elementary school. Madbrook is, has offers full day, which this is not. And there may be the perception that this preschool here is, is only for kids who need special ed services.
Yeah, because you're saying they're hoping that they can offer full day.
Right. Next year, we're looking at changing the models.
Yeah, I mean, you know what? If you can offer full day, I think people are going to take advantage of that.
Absolutely.
I think that's a big reason why people don't send their kids here.
Absolutely.
That's why my children think they'll just.
That's why my son, my daughter, come here.
All four of us.
Because the other option in the eyes of the state would be to take the sped students and welcome them together and make a separate preschool.
Okay.
But the problem with that is, in theory, yeah, that sounds great, but most of the kids that qualify for preschool qualify because they require an integrated preschool. So unless they're severely disabled, it wouldn't be a rip. And parents would fight and argue to send them to a place that does have a range of typical and models to learn within a language-based program. It wouldn't be compliant anyway, right?
So are we going to run into that issue if we don't open this up to people out of the district? Like, if we have 46 kids and 32 of them are special needs, right? We're not going to make our numbers, like, we're not going to be as.
So that's where the tier model comes in to play. So that's why next, I mean, this year, we can't really change too much because tuitions are set and schedules are set. But looking at next year and having, you know, surveys go out to parents and see what do they want? What is the need? You know, where are they looking for? Maybe they only have enough to do a couple days a week and they don't want to do every day after. And have, you know, tiered pricing, tiered options of maybe they want two days a week. Maybe they want two full days a week. Maybe they want five full day. Maybe they want, you know. So getting the survey out, seeing what the need is, and then creating those tiered models to be able to fit and service more kids. Madbrook's model, I believe they serve up to 50 kids with their model.
So my recommendation would be if you're not comfortable with the idea of town employees and out of district students coming in, that you consider the, just the creation of the classroom because one way or another, we are going to be paying for these students to receive services. I would much rather do it internally with the idea that in the future, we can build a program that has sort of a model that is very flexible, almost like an à la cot menu. Like, I need Mondays and Wednesdays that works for my schedule versus, and it, and it will be set up so that we can avoid this in the future, which, you know, we don't want to continually, because we consider just doing a half-day program, just asking for a halftime teacher and an aide to get us through the shift, but we would already be full with the referrals she has now. Never mind what we're going to get for referrals in January, February, March, April.
But those figures on the previous slide, those refer just a half day.
One half day.
Right.
So it would, so that cost as compared to sending them out is going to be more in line with sending them out if we have to have a full day, isn't it?
Yeah, we hold that to that.
For half a year.
No, it's half a year, not half a day.
Because we're already in.
Because we want to start it in January, so it's a half a year.
From January to June.
It's not a half day for it. It's a full day. A teacher full, five days a week, full day.
Which is a half year.
But it's only a half a year.
But so, no, you're right though. So full year would be 100 grand. Yeah, but you know what's the same as sending them out? What you're looking at then is you're looking at five kids, or what is it, eight kids who may, who may have, because they went to a preschool out of town, like they went to Westmorefield or something, their parents considered choicing them to.
I'm totally with you. I'm, I'm.
Wait, I mean, they have a preschool here.
I'm totally with you. Getting them here is really.
Chances of them staying here are getting them in a program.
This will also, this will also open it up to the regular kids who would be paying tuition.
So for 100 grand, you have more spaces.
Yeah, we only use $300 a month because we just tried to pick something that makes sense.
And that's for how many months? That's for, I'm, I'm, I'm slow on the math. So you're figuring that for six months?
Okay, here it's very much a major.
I mean, honestly, you know, yeah, maybe it ends up costing the same in the end, but I think the benefits of what you get by expanding preschool program is going to end up being better than.
Again, program building, full day, program half day.
So just to send them out for, say, this is the year, if we, you know, send them out, it's going to cost us over $100,000.
Right.
If we make the program, it's going to cost us 50 grand now, right? But then it's all set up and they're here and then we're going to be getting tuition in from the typical peers.
Right, yep.
So it's half.
So it will.
We definitely need to look, we talked about looking at modifying our tuition, our tuition rates as well. We're considerably lower than our, and it doesn't, it's not a program that's going to bring in a lot of money. It's not. The salaries are paid for out of grants and some other areas, but we did, we're way below.
Right. There's no reason we shouldn't be comparable.
We wish we'd be somewhat more comparable, not without.
Right. The figures I had put up from.
What is ours? Monique?
From the local, so we're about six bucks depending on where they fall on the scale. So most places, so Madley here has it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can't get a babysitter for $6.
No, you.
$90, no, it was 90.
It's about 110 a month.
110.
Oh my goodness gracious. Yeah, we've had this conversation before.
I don't remember it being.
We need to make some adjustments there.
More than double.
Well, so I, I think the, I think the question that people have is, is that your concerns seem to be having typical kids coming, town employees, typical kids of town employees coming in and also advertising to out of town tuition. You're concerned about that?
No, not concerned. I just wanted to clarify that it wasn't a legal issue, but.
I'm very concerned that when we say, we'll accept your kid, but not if they're special education. I'm very concerned about that, yes.
So, okay, so then what Mr. Lynn said was then, why don't we just vote on, do we, do they open the, the new classroom in January or do they not open the new classroom in January? And then we can look more into the other stuff as we get into, going into, in the spring and looking at, at expanding the program in the fall?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes, incremental steps.
Because we certainly have enough kids to make the program happen now. We can expand the options.
Like just opening it up.
So where does that money come from?
So we do have some money available in the preschool revolving account that is there. And we do have some salary differential.
Okay. So you, you have money to pay for this?
We do.
Okay. So they budgeted money for it?
Well, we didn't budget the money there.
No, no.
Full, out of the current budget.
That's not what I meant. What I meant, you understand, you know you have the money.
Yes.
What I meant, you know, you have the money within the budget now, you do not need to find it from another position.
No, we do not.
So you don't have to have a special time meeting for this?
No.
And very comfortable not paying additional transportation costs.
Oh, true.
So why don't we, why don't we make a motion?
Do we have a more comfortable...
Make a motion to expand to a second classroom starting in January 19?
Motion to expand to create another preschool section, correct? Am I saying that right?
Yep.
Beginning in January for the remainder of the 2018-19 school year.
Second.
All in favor? And then, you know, maybe in a couple months, you come back to us and you'll have more details and stuff and maybe following up on, I think Megan's concern is, seems to be the big one.
We'll also obviously have the budget process starting, so if this is part of it, it'll be included in the 2020 budget.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Monique, that was good information.
And lastly, the list continues to grow for the amazing donations we get from our community. So in your packet, there's a whole bunch of backup documents, but I'll just go through them quickly. As part of the one run, walk and roll event, sped pack donated $380, Vibram $250, General 25 and Hannaford's 25 that were not approved previously. Do you want me to go through all of them or do you want me to do it?
Yeah, go through all of them quickly, I'm going to do a motion.
All right. Then, the Northbrook Field Sports Boosters donated money for field hockey jerseys in the amount of $1,677.60. Then the Robotics Club, and this is amazing, $250 from the Northbrook Field Savings Bank, $150 from Cornerstone Bank, $100 from Country Autobody, $125 from Hillsbury Funeral Home, Karen Donovan donated 150, Gwen Eaton 50, Whitco Sales 50, Debbie Wong Restaurant 300, Lamro Ford 100. And I'm sorry, I did get a number of other donations after the agenda was presented, so do you want me to add those in?
Sure, we approve them all. Okay.
Did we have the restaurant one on here? It's in there. It's in there. Yeah. Yeah, it's on.
I got it. All right. So additionally, for robotics, Flexcon 100, Laughlin Insurance 100, Comprehensive Physical Therapy 100. Then, we received from the PTO, $75 donation, donation for Mrs. Ahern and her classroom project room. Somewhere in my stack here.
Was it, is it for the kindergarten and the Polar Express?
Yes, for the Polar Express. And then $300 for the cafeteria and a new computer.
Who did that come from?
From the PTO.
Okay.
And then lastly, for Bay Path Regional High School, a Cruiser screen printing press valued at approximately $4,500. That's what the cost was on eBay. So they didn't put a price on it, I am doing that. So those are the amazing donations we received.
What was the restaurant, what was the, how much was the restaurant?
Which restaurant?
Oh, W-Wong Restaurant, 300.
300.
Wow. And that was for robotics?
Yes.
Flexcon, Laughlin Insurance.
And...
Comprehensive PT was all for robotics?
And 100 each for those for robotics and physical therapy, 100, yes.
For robotics. And then did we also have one from Lamro Ford, was that in here?
Yep. Lamro was 100.
It's like Molly...
And that was for robotics?
What's that?
Well, it's a bonus for robotics too. Yep. Motion to approve the sped pack donation for $380 to the Run, Walk and Roll Event from Vibram Corporation in the amount of $250 for the Run, Walk and Roll Event, Dollar General in the amount of $25 for the Run, Walk and Roll Event, Hannaford's in the amount of $25 for the Run, Walk and Roll Event, Northbrook Field Sports Boosters in the amount of $1,677.60 for field hockey jerseys, Northbrook Field Savings Bank in the amount of $250 for the Robotics Club, Cornerstone Bank in the amount of $150 for Robotics Club, Country Autobody in the amount of 100 for the Robotics Club, Hillsbury Funeral Home in the amount of $125 for the Robotics Club, Karen Donovan in the amount of $150 for the Robotics Club, Gwen Eaton in the amount of $50 for the Robotics Club, Whitco Sales in the amount of $50 for the Robotics Club, Lamro Ford in the amount of $100 for the Robotics Club, Debbie Wong Restaurant in the amount of $300 for the Robotics Club, Flexcon in the amount of $100 for the Robotics Club, Laughlin Insurance in the amount of $100 for the Robotics Club, Comprehensive PT, $100, in the amount of $100 for the Robotics Club, PTO $75 for Mrs. Ahern's classroom from the PTO in the amount of $300 for the cafeteria. And then from Bay Path Regional High School, the Cruiser screen printing press in roughly the approximate amount of $4,500.
Good one.
Got them all?
I'll second what she said.
All in favor?
And thank you very much to everyone's very generous donation.
Yes.
It was amazing.
That is amazing.
Well, we are done for this evening, so no executive session?
No.
Just a, just a question that just came up. In terms of the minutes approval, the question was, were all of the minutes approved or were the regular meeting, the policy subcommittee and the executive session minutes all approved as a group or...
Uh, we didn't, we did not donate them, so you can do that now.
Can I do a speech separately?
Sure.
Motion to approve the school committee regular meeting minutes of October 15th to 2018.
All in favor?
I abstained because I wasn't here.
Okay.
Motion to approve the policy, I don't know, I'm sorry. Yep. Motion to approve the policy subcommittee meeting of October 15th to 2018.
All in favor?
Motion to approve the school committee executive session minutes of October 15th to 2018.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Are we all set?
Yep.
Yeah?
Motion...
Second.
Second.
[laughing]